If you stand with me, we'll do the implication following. Heavenly Father, we love you today, God, and we're so thankful for your love towards us. We ask your blessings on this meeting tonight, on each person that's attending. Father, we ask for your wisdom, your grace, and your direction and leadership in this meeting. We thank you for your love for the city and Lord, helping us to make it the best city we can. And so we ask this all in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're gonna start with a presentation. Have I have it? Did I get that from you? You got a copy over there?
Um, I believe they're gonna put it up on the screen there and then Mr. Mason, are you gonna be presenting over there now?
Yes, uh huh.
Okay, all right.
Okay, this is my security here. Okay, grand evening.
Go ahead.
Um, to the CEO of the Phoenix Act, the Honorable Mayor Campbell, councilmen and councilwomen, maintenance personnel, and I'm gonna stop right there and say, I wanna give a shout out to Danny Nichols and Anthony Kaiser. Um, they were lawn attendants and waste management. Chief Sheffield, uh, the city police, and all remaining seen and unseen help. The Slausanne Avenue community like would like to extend a heartfelt thanks for your invaluable help and dedication in making such a momentous event possible. With your unwavering support, the Slausanne Avenue community was fortunate to hold its second annual Slausanne Avenue reunion, bringing home countless individuals who otherwise would have never returned, many who have not been in the area since the 1970s and the 80s. The Slausanne Avenue reunion fosters community growth and engagement, passing down history from one generation to the next. It is the community's hope that with your continued support, Slausanne Avenue will continue to share its history, preserving it for posterity and inspiring change and hope in the generations to follow. Thank you all again for your dedication and timeness assistance. We look forward to to future opportunities to serve together and service of our shared community with utmost appreciation, the Slausanne Avenue Union Committee. And with that there, um, we're gonna make the mayor an honorary Slausonian.
Yeah. All right. Well, thank you very much, and we're very, very grateful for all you guys.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, come on with your fit.
Put your shirt on, man.
Now, don't be upset with the size on. Tom at the printing shop said that was your size.
Now, he don't know. He made church for thirteen years.
Okay. Well, let's put you in the deal.
All right, put it up in my neck. All right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you guys. All right.
Mayor, before we move to consent, I'd like, if that's okay.
Go ahead.
Uh, just, it's not only agenda, but I wanted to make a quick announcement. Um, council, you know, our last meeting, we separated utilities and public works. We now have a formal utilities department, um, which I think is gonna be a great step for the city, uh, moving forward in all aspects. And so I just wanna make it known to all of you and to the community that Randall Holden has been promoted to the city's first ever utilities director, and I'm very excited, and I think he's gonna do great things. Randall's been with the city a little over 15 years, and couldn't be a better person for the job, so.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, and kudos, amen. I love my man. All right, we're gonna go to consent agenda, and we have certainly entertained a motion to approve as written. If you have something that needs to be pulled off, please let us know at this time.
So moved.
I'd like to.
Wait, 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 wait. Do we have a second? Our second, okay, go ahead.
I'd like to remove a couple of things from the consent agenda.
Okay.
Um, I'd like to remove, um, Ds and Delta regarding the airport.
Yeah.
And Is and Echo regarding the finance director position description.
Okay. All right, all right, so you want to modify your motion?
Yes, sir, I'll modify to include those changes.
And your second?
I'll second.
He just needs to modify his second. To include.
Can I ask why we're removing?
Well, he's gonna make that pretty clear in just a minute.
Okay.
All right, we'll consider it second. All right, uh, and we are back to Todd?
Yes, sir.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All right.
Hi, Scotty, thank you very much, and, uh, all right, Kobe, we're gonna go to the regular agenda, but, uh, let's see where we wanna move these to.
Okay, Mayor, we can move, uh, what was 3D1?
Get D1 and.
We'll move that to 4B1, and what was 3E1, we will move to 4B2.
Mr. Mayor.
4B2, okay, all right.
Okay.
Um. They'll be the first two items under the city meeting. Yeah, I guess, go ahead, Todd.
Um, I know that there's a lot of interest in agenda item 6B1, and is practically down at the bottom of the list. Um, in the interest of of time for everyone that's that has made the effort to show up tonight, could we move that to the top of the agenda, please?
I don't have a problem with it, Kobe.
No, sir. Or.
All right, where you wanting it, Kobe?
Are you looking for under the two we just talked about, or on a particular spot of the agenda?
That's fine, just let's just move it to the top of the agenda.
Okay, Mayor, we will move it after, um, well, we just made 4B2, or which will be, yeah.
So we add D1, E1, and then we have this, what is it?
6B1.
6B1, all right. Okay, with the.
So it'd be 4B3?
Yes.
But with the changes, um, I'm looking for approval of the regular agenda.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, second.
Is this where you can add something?
Um, add to the agenda?
Yes, sir.
You mean something totally new?
Yes, sir.
No, sir. Um, now, we can, if you've got three council members that agree with it.
Okay, um, one of them was, uh, one of the subjects is public works. There's some outstanding employees that I wanted to recognize, and I've been, I've had a really up close and personal look at their work lately, and I wanted to give them a shout out.
If there's not a motion attached, you can do that under your council comments if you so prefer. That's typically when you do that.
Okay, Doug.
All right.
Council comments?
There you go.
Okay, so we'll put that on council comments, and another one that doesn't require a vote is what are sewage contracts?
Okay, um. If it does require a motion, they can stay in the council comments as well. Yeah. Yeah, you only really need to make the addition if you're asking the council to vote on it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll do them both then.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, so I'm just gonna put, when I call on you, just go ahead and add those, you don't have to, I don't have to call them out, you just go ahead and call them out when you do your comments.
Okay.
Okay, all right. All right, uh, with that, um, we did, we got a motion to approve and a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Hi, Scotty, thank you very much. Um, all right, we'll go right into the regular agenda with what was D1 at the airport. Was that Dan?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Um, I believe out in getting out in front of things, um, there's been a lot of negativity about the airport, airport regarding all the funding that's been getting lately, and people think that it is being pulled away from infrastructure and other matters. I wanted, uh, I've been getting a lot of phone calls and emails on this, and I just wanted to put the record straight on a, at a public meeting, that this is grant money, uh, it's not city money, and it's from the Florida Department of Transportation. And Kobe, do you want to, um, elaborate on this any?
I can briefly. Um, so the, uh, the contract on the on the agenda is contract G3C58. Uh, council, a few months back, approved that contract, uh, then that was in the amount of 1.5 million dollars. That was the fiscal year 2025 work plan dollars from the Florida Department of Transportation to the airport. So FDOT has a, has a, has a specific aviation department within its, within it, and, uh, they, they assign work plan dollars to our airport, which cannot be moved from aviation use, that's what they're for. Um, and then, that was fiscal year '25. Fiscal year '26, we have a $900,000 allocation for the same type of project. So monies are assigned in the work plan, they're put within some particular use. Um, you can get those changed, but we don't need to change them, we need them for the project we've already identified. And so if you, uh, read the contract as it was, 1.5, already had the narrative that we were coming back for the fiscal year '26 in the amount of 900,000, so it's grant monies, uh, from the DOT. Uh, DOT just, they, they recommended amendment to the contract rather than a totally separate grant agreement. So they just, they're increasing the funding from 1.5 to 900,000.
So none of the funding.
Or to 2.4 million.
Has come out of our, uh, water or sewage or general budget, anything like that?
No, sir. Grant money from Florida Department of Transportation, and we do not make transfers from the general fund to the airport fund. It is a self-sustaining enterprise fund.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve FDOT contract G3C58, amendment one.
Second.
I have a motion, second. Um, other questions, comments, from anyone? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Hi, Scotty, thank you very much. Uh, you wanna go to E1?
The reason I wanted the finance director, uh, position description pulled off is because, um, we've got two scenarios. We got one scenario where, um, we want them to have an accounting degree and so much experience, or the second scenario is a high school degree, um, and work experience. Uh, the work experience is a little, is a little more involved, but I made some phone calls within the borders of Walton County, and every county office, sheriff's department, school board, um, tax collector's office, uh, everybody that's got a finance director has an accountant or higher. There's a lot of CPAs that's the finance director. And Freeport, same way. There's only, I only found one government agency that allowed someone with a high school degree to be, to act, to either be or act as their finance director, and that's Paxton. So I feel like we need to raise our bar so that it is accountant or CPA, not someone with a high school degree. And here's my rationale. Just because you've got experience doesn't mean you're qualified for the job. For example, and I'm gonna use the medical field as an example. You can be an EMT for 20 years, and that does not qualify you to be a paramedic. There are different, there are different skill sets. One is basic life support, the other is advanced. The same thing in the nursing world. You can be an LPN for 20 years, and that doesn't mean you're qualified to be a registered nurse, because there are different skill sets. Um, Paxton's the only one that doesn't require anything higher than a, than a high school degree. Uh, their budget is about $3 million a year, and, um, I just really think we should raise the bar and not go backwards. So I'm gonna ask that you reconsider, and if you don't, uh, I understand that's, that's okay. I just wanted to get this out there, I didn't want the bar lowered, I wanted to be on par with the rest of the county.
Okay, so, gonna get a vote on that, or?
Yes, sir.
Need to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that, uh, we have as a requirement for our finance director to be a accountant from an accredited source or higher, and not have someone that just does not have the skill sets, like a high school degree or a two-year degree.
So to be clear, you're wishing to eliminate the work experience in lieu of the BS degree?
Correct. With the BS degree being accountant and accounting.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second, uh, question? Comments from, or from the council? Or from the public?
Question.
Yeah.
I'm not familiar with the history here, how, how long has that description been the description for the finance director? Do we have any idea how far that goes back, or? Um, not to put anybody on the spot, I'm just curious.
The crossout said, uh, last approved by city council from May 25th of 2022. Now, I don't know what changes may have happened, the 22 version to, prior to that, but that was the last time this was updated.
The finance director ordinance dates back to 1987, and I would imagine that the similar work experience has been included since at least then, it was present in the 1990 version of the ordinance that was amended in 2017, and again in 2018.
With the work experience.
They amended, so for instance, in 2017, the council amended qualifications to acquire a bachelor's of science, hands or higher in accounting, public finance, business administration from a four-year university or five years' work experience, so it was actually lesser back then, when you go to look at that. And then they again made an amendment to that in 2018 to increase it from five to eight years. So I believe it was three originally, is my recollection from '94. Amy?
I just wanted to make a different comment, but on the same subject matter. At our last meeting, I asked to have this postponed so we could play with this and bring it back tonight for, uh, approval. And, you know, we sat and spent a lot of time going through this, but I noticed the ordinance never came back with it, so, uh.
The ordinance requires, the ordinance requires two readings, so for us to actually get the advertisement on the first reading, we're in that weird fifth week of the month, so for proper advertising, you notice from your last council meeting, it has to be in your meeting in August, would be your first reading, and then your second reading would be your second meeting in the month of August.
Is it ready, is it written so that we can review it in case we have suggestions, or?
I'll be glad to circulate it, but it's copying directly out of this.
Uh, okay, I, because I've asked for it, and I've still to, to, as of this evening, have not seen it. So I'd like to see it before, an hour before we are asked to vote on it, if that's possible.
The language is identical to what's listed here. It's the same language. It's conforming the jobs, the direction was to conform the ordinance to the job description.
So, so if it's the same, would somebody please just email it for us? That'd be great.
Oh, no, that's not a problem.
This part is not a problem.
No, not at all. The city's advertising it, you're not gonna hire until after the ordinance.
I'm just talking about this part about the accountant.
But it would change this language if it's approved.
Well, if you change it now, we're gonna go back and change the ordinance again, yes. And you have to go change that again, if that's the case.
Okay.
But until the council approves it, the ordinance is not ready to be sent for first reading. All right.
I just wanted to be clear.
Go ahead. Go ahead. You know, a person can have eight years of experience and be exceptionally qualified. And, you know, that decision's up to the council to make that determination, you know, and, and we have to be wise about that kind of thing. But I do know, uh, that just because someone has a degree doesn't necessarily mean they are qualified. Uh, they might have muddled through four years of experience, which is another part of that qualification, uh, at a city and then been let go, or been, you know, got the message that they're not working out or whatever, but, um, you know, a degree doesn't necessarily cement, uh, a qualified person. Um, no more than experience does, but if somebody's been there for eight years, and they've been allowed to be there for eight years in that position, you have to think they've done a pretty good job, unless there was some favoritism to that position or that, that particular person. But, um, again, that's up to the council, either one of these.
Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor.
I didn't know you had a hand up, go ahead.
So, for me personally, I have worked alongside people that have had no degree, master's degrees, PhDs, multiples of all those. Um, I, I'm, I'm a firm believer that experience matters. I, I've worked around people that have, um, I'm, I'm in the technology industry, so I've, I've worked with people that have technology degrees, that have engineering degrees, and I've also worked around people that have none of that, and yet they're wiser than other people. The city has bought the T-shirt on both of the, both sides of this equation, and in both of those instances, it did, it didn't matter a hill of beans. Right? We, we've hired people that checked every box, that had every degree, that had every certification, and, and they're not here. We've also done the opposite, we've also hired people that we felt like had experience and were here, and that didn't help us either. So just because it's in the, the description doesn't mean we are compelled or forced to hire this person. You know, when we discussed this at the last meeting, you know, I brought up the fact that it's an incumbent on the council to interview this person and to ask his questions that we believe will draw out whether they're capable and qualified for this position, regardless of the credentials that they bring. Because I, I can tell you, I've worked around people that have plenty of credentials. I believe that the phrase that was used a lot was more degrees than a thermometer, and yet couldn't run this city to save his life. So, um, I, I firmly believe that we have actually strengthened the job description requirements, and it's on us to hire the right person, not on ticking every little box and, and, and worrying, obsessing over whether they have a four-year degree or not.
Anyone else?
Yes, sir.
Every county and city agency within the borders of Walton County would disagree, except for Paxton. And if we're gonna go on that mindset hypothetically, and I'm not taking a shot at you, Clay, I'm, this is just hypothetical, if he's got somebody in his law office that's been there 20 years and is a paralegal, and knows contracts backwards and forwards, and has worked under Clay's tuition, and knows all the tricks in the trade of being a government attorney, why couldn't they take place, place?
Because the Florida bar says they can.
Yeah, that's an apples to oranges comparison.
Unfortunately, the Florida bar says that would be unlicensed practice of law.
Right. You, you're comparing medical professionals and lawyers that are, that are licensed through the state versus a position for this city, and that they're, they're apples and oranges in, in the largest way possible.
But the, the rest of the county doesn't see it that way.
Just because everybody else doesn't, doesn't, does it, doesn't make it right for the city of Phoenix Springs.
So we're just hanging there with Paxton. Got you.
Well, could, could I point out, you know, the description says, under A, a bachelor's degree in accounting, public finance, business administration, or closely related field. A person with a, a bachelor's in business administration, that's not accounting. Um, you know, so a, a bachelor's in itself doesn't necessarily, you know, take, take care of this. The, the experience, on the other hand, would absolutely take care of it if a person came from a, 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 you know, appropriate, had appropriate track, track record, but, you know.
The motion was specifically for an accountant?
For an accountant.
Or a higher?
Got you.
Okay, all right, anyone else? All right, Holden, favor say aye?
Nay.
Yes.
I'm a nay.
Yea.
All right, it's, uh, 2-2, so it's gonna fail. The amendment fails, we still need a motion on the agenda item, Mayor, about the approval of the actual request before the council.
So moved.
Okay.
Is that with or without the finance piece?
With.
I'm sorry?
With.
Thank you.
All right, did we get a second?
Repeat. What, what does it?
To approve it as, as presented.
3E1 as presented.
Okay.
Okay, did we get a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All right, I have a motion, a second, any questions, comments? Anyone? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
No.
Aye.
Nay.
Okay. Motion fails. Yep. All right, well, we're running more time on that for now.
What's that? Can we just take that one off?
You can, you can.
Mayor, would the council be amenable to, uh, removing the finance director, uh, and, and moving forward with the utilities director, poller works director, and utility billing supervisor, and allow y'all more time, however you wish to discuss on the finance director?
I'll make that a motion.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, y'all understand the motion?
Everything.
Clarify it.
To move forward with the utilities director description, poller works director description, and utility billing supervisor description, uh, and not considering the finance director description at this time.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second, any question, comments? Any questions, comments from anyone? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Hi, Scotty, thank you very much. So if we will, I'll just comment, I can bring you that ordinance back, but does the city want me to go to the trouble of starting the advertising process and incurring those expenses if you're gonna talk about the finance direct, finance director's job description more? Because what I will be presenting literally mirrors what was in your package tonight, which would have been advertised based on the 2-2 tie vote, but is now not being advertised. So if we're gonna discuss it more, it seems imprudent for me to incur your time and money to advertise that.
I was thinking the entire reason that we were updating the ordinance is because it was in direct conflict of the job description.
Correct, that one section, A, B, and C, as being advertised, would have not mirrored what is in your ordinance. Council's direction, if it had been to advertise this, would have been to conform the ordinance to the job description. And it's really qualifications, training, and experience is the section that has to be updated.
I, I do want to clarify, Mr. Mayor, we're, we're, we're not gonna put every single bullet point from the, from the knowledge, skills, and abilities into the ordinance, are we?
That's was what I understood was not to be the case. That's why it's not included in the, what I prepared. And it's not required, to be very clear. Duties, qualifications, training, experience is the part that was conflicting that we had to address. All right, so what's our options here to either, go ahead and? Well, it sounds like I need to hold off unless they're telling me, because it sounds like they want to talk about it more, but I just want to be clear, because Councilwoman Evelyn asked, when's that gonna be back? Well, it sounds like it needs to wait until they talk about it more. At least till we have five members, since it's 2-2.
Go ahead.
Mayor, oh, I, I was gonna say, I'd prefer to read it before he goes out and publicizes it, because I haven't read it.
Boy, literally.
And even though, I, I understand that you say it's literally that.
It is verbatim qualifications, training, and experience, there's nothing else in it.
So I would like to see what the 19, I think you said 1987 version versus the new version is gonna look like.
We'll gladly go for all those.
Okay. I, I thought you said it hadn't been, the ordinance wasn't updated since 1987.
No, it's been updated four times. No, I read.
I misunderstood.
I read the two most recent ones in, 2018 was the most recent one after that.
And that's the one that was forced on us, right? I mean, I know we modified it, but was that part of the grand jury recommendation?
No.
Okay.
No, that was the council's decision in hiring the finance director when we hired Ms. Gibson. Um, they wanted to update to require more experience, which is what got us to the eight years over five.
And that was the council that hired Ms. Gibson?
Mm-hmm.
Which is what the one, okay. So did they do that prior to their, uh, advertisements?
I believe they actually updated, um, they updated two parts of it, I believe that was during the hiring process. It was in July of 18, that recall, that strikes me as around the time we did those interviews when Mr. Smigelski was still here.
For Deborah?
We updated the bond.
I was Deborah's competition, so that's why I'm just kinda curious what, I don't recall any of that.
Okay. It was adopted by the council on the 23rd day of July, 2018.
Okay.
Take a, provide a copy of it.
And that's the most updated one, Clay?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Thank you.
We went through a real dark period in our city's history involving our finance department. Grand jury, numbers didn't come up. And it wasn't just one year or two years. We went through a dark period there. So if you want to know what my motive is, it is not to go backwards and not to repeat that. To have the best qualified person with the best tools to do the job. That's my motive. That's all I want.
Okay. All right. I guess we're going to.
I'll, I'll circulate drafts and we'll hold off until the council's had yet one more chance to talk about this.
All right. Okay. Now we do do the six B, one?
Four, three, three, mayor.
Yep.
Four, three.
Which was six B one?
Six B one.
I'm sorry.
Okay. All right. We're going to, I guess Josh is going to bring that up. Here you go. He's coming in.
Good evening, mayor, council, members of the public. I'm pleased to be in front of you tonight with some progress on our veterans memorial project that we have been working on. Just a little background information to remind everyone, including the public, that this originated back through our redevelopment plan update process where we had a, a visioning session and allowed the public to introduce their ideas for our redevelopment plan and in particular our capital improvement list. Subsequent to that, we had a joint workshop back with the city council on October the 16th, where we discussed this project in, very specifically. At that particular workshop, it was identified that we needed to have, you know, some more meetings with veterans. So on November the 7th, we, of 2024, we had a meeting at the DAV where multiple chapters are present. And we discussed the labyrinth concept and the location. Back early this year, in February, our board put together a task order for Dewberry to look at three locations, to come up with some high level concept drawings to focus primarily on the general scale and the accessibility for each location. So on May the 22nd of 2025, our consultant, which is here tonight to answer any technical questions you may have, provided these concept drawings where we solicited public input at large as to the location and as to, you know, kind of the overall concept of its applicability for those respective locations. So during that conversation, we introduced the technical side of each location and we allowed the participants to rank them in accordance with their preference. Green being yes, orange being maybe, red being no, along with pros and cons for each site. Through that exercise, which we had over two dozen in attendance, we saw that there was a strong favor for the original location, which is here at Main Avenue in Circle Drive in that little depressed area where that circular sidewalk section is. So at this point, there are still a lot of questions surrounding this project. What is it going to look like? What features are going to be included? What about the sidewalk sections that go along there? Could those be shortened? Could they be lengthened? Could they be reconfigured? And the short answer to that is yes. But in order for us to have those level of detailed questions and answers, we need to be in a position where we can hire an engineering consultant to start the formal design. So tonight, we're at kind of that crossroad where we have this information. We would like to move forward with formal design development. But considering that it is in the Chipley Park and, and property of the city, we would like to ask your permission to move forward with that so that we can answer some more of those questions. So again, I have Rudy Mall with Dewberry here to answer any technical questions you may have as it relates to the concept drawings and any other questions you may have as it relates to.
I know you've had several meetings. The public's been invited to, how many?
They've been invited to all of them.
And that would be about how many?
So, you know, like I said, we, we had a meeting at the CRA City Council Workshop. We had a meeting at the DAV. We've had subsequent council and CRA meetings. And then we had a public meeting at large, a public workshop on May the 22nd, where we advertised that for three consecutive weeks in the Feneet Carroll. We posted it on the city's Facebook page. We distributed flyers to all the veterans groups. And we also did an advertisement on WZEP on local radio. So been a lot of opportunities. The core function or purpose of this workshop on May 22nd was to look at concept drawings more so than really get into the weeds of what this thing may look like. You know, here's its representation at this respective area. Do you like this area? Do you not like this area? And so that's really the, the purpose of that. It was to collect general feedback from the public to show somewhat, you know, preference, if you will, of moving this project forward at either location.
Any, I'll go to the council. Y'all have any technical questions you want to ask the engineer that's with us?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can you tell me what the cost estimate would be for the site one?
Rudy Monk, Dewberry Engineers. So the, the cost estimate really depends on the material to be used. We have a linear feet of sidewalk that we have conceptualized. I can leave that number out and do a base calculation on that. But until, you know, the, the CRA decides on what type of material and I guess overall detail on the plan, the, the cost on the project is, is unknown.
Mr. Mayor, how, how much was the cost for your task order to, to develop those plans?
Myself?
Yeah.
Yes. Twenty-two, five hundred.
Twenty-two thousand?
Yes, sir.
So we spent $22,000, had 10 public meetings, and we're no further along than when we discussed this last time.
Now, once we decide on the site, and I believe that was what this whole meeting, this workshop meeting was to help, take a step forward, was to, you know, everyone get on board with a site. And then we, part of my scope was to finish out the, the, the basic concept to a more detailed engineering concept and provide an engineering cost of opinion for that.
So in your, in your presentation, you, everyone, all three of these sites, you showed a labyrinth. You didn't consider any sort of other design that, that could be implemented to honor veterans. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Well, on the point of design, I, I think we've all been blown up with emails and phone calls and discussions on the street and what have you. And, and that has come up numerous times with people that I've heard from about the, the choice of the recognition, what it would be, whether, you know, there's all kinds of memorials out there and ways to do that. So I'm not real clear on how that process went and if those options were discussed or whatever. Myself, I've also heard from a lot of people that are opposed to the location. And I remember, you know, when we discussed, I don't recall if it was in a workshop or, or, or when it, when it was. But I, you know, it seems like the council was fairly clear in the objection to additional buildings in the lake yard. And this first phase might not include that. But are there additional phases to follow that might include the construction of pavilion and restrooms?
Sure. If, if I may go back to the question regarding the labyrinth. So back on November the 7th, where we met with the DAV, Councilman Conners was president at that. We actually asked the, the, the members in, in attendance there, the veterans members in attendance, to, to show support or not for the concept of a labyrinth. That, you know, we could talk all day long for many days about what it could look like, what it couldn't look like. We included the labyrinth as the concept in the redevelopment plan update. And during that meeting, the DAV commander basically asked for those in attendance, which if I recall correctly, was well over 30, if they supported the A, location, and B, the labyrinth design. And, and the overwhelming response was yes. And so that's how we decided to, to move forward with continuing this conversation as far as a location. As far as the ancillary buildings or pavilions, those are all things that have been discussed. Certainly not part of our scope. I think we all can recognize that that's probably a little too much right now. But I think the goal would be to, to look at the memorial, figure out how we can move that forward in some capacity. And then if there's some desire later on, that will be part of another task order. But right now, that design development would be purely for the memorial and the accessibility as it relates to that.
Go ahead.
As a veteran, I'm 100% for the veterans memorial. However, I'm opposed to the location. Y'all got the same emails I did? I'd like to make a motion that we disapprove the location.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Questions, comments?
Mr. Mayor, so I, I want to go back to this because this has been brought up a couple of times in our workshop now, previous meetings. One of the things that, and I, I harped on this last time. One, one of my issues is only one option was presented, and that was the labyrinth. And that's, that's what I heard from people that were at the DAV meeting. That's what I heard from people that were at these other public meetings. There's only one option that's continually presented over and over and over again at all these meetings. And yet I've heard from other people that have said, you know, the council's considering a park project called the Linear Park that was presented by Senec Walton and actually handed to us on a silver platter. And the idea was start out there at the airport where we already have a T-38 sitting there on display. Let that be part of an air, air force display. And then as the linear part progresses down through the middle of Defoe-Niac Springs, we could erect monuments to the various services, all seven branches. And through, throughout the linear part that runs the entire width of Defoe-Niac Springs, we could, we could honor our veterans. That hasn't been presented at any of these meetings, any of these public meetings. Instead, one concept and one location has just been repeatedly presented over and over and over again. And that, that's what I'm hearing from the public in phone calls, emails, people coming into my store, stopping me on the street. That's the concern that I have. And that's, that's the same concern that I've had all along is, and Mr. Harrison, you, you pointed this out. What, what's, what's the idea here? Because there's a labyrinth, there's pavilions, there's bathrooms, there's flagpoles, there's, you know, bricks with, with people's names on it. The, the concept isn't being solidified in any sort of way. Instead, it's just, we're going to build a labyrinth in the lake yard. I guess I'll be the jerk that says this, but that concept of a labyrinth in the lake yard has already been presented to previous councils and been voted down. And I, I find it as, as the, the son of an air force veteran, I find it offensive to just slap the word veterans on something and then say, we're going to do this for the veterans when it was not approved previously for something else. That's just my personal feeling on it. I'm not saying anybody else has to have that feeling, but that's my personal feeling on it.
Yes, ma'am.
Josh, can I ask you, I've gotten a lot of inquiries to me also. Has anyone ever thought about a location out of Veterans Lodge? Had that ever been a?
Yeah, I think that's been discussed, you know, at some point when that gets built, perhaps having some memorial, whether that's publicly funded, privately funded. So, you know, as far as.
But I meant for this project to be on that property out there.
No, I think the difference is that being private property versus this being public property. So, you know, the short answer is yes, but don't really have any plans or, or any allowance, if you will, from the private owner.
Thank you for that.
So as far as alternatives, you know, I've mentioned, I don't, I don't know that I did in, in a meeting. But, you know, if, if the goal is to have a lot of veterans become aware of this memorial, regardless of where it is. And there's nobody sitting here that's opposed to Veterans Memorial. But there is a lot of blowback from the public on, on the lake yard. It's the gem of the city. I've heard it over and over and over. And they're just concerned about additional structures in the lake yard and what has. But, but, but I had this idea of, you know, the Wayside Park at 331 to 90. There's already facilities that this city encourages the expensive maintaining and nobody uses a lot of that park for anything. We have restrooms, we have picnic shelters, we have shade trees, we have level ground. Now, if you get off that level ground, yes, it slopes down to the street below. But at the end of that level area, there is parking on the same level that could be easily improved. But you talk about a place where it's highly visible and could potentially be visited a tremendous amount by, by tourists coming through here, by the millions. And it's very visible right there. So, you know, I've always thought that, you know, if we don't utilize parks, we end up eventually shutting them down because they just cost us money, right? We've got 11 parks in the city, if I'm correct. But so that park could be utilized for something that and be extremely attractive right there, I, I think, if, if considered. So I'm not for one say, no one something without offering something as an alternative. You know, the, the fountain area at the lake yard was considered, but people just didn't want to see that either. But so, you know, we, we've got to think about this, put our heads together because we, we would like to see this thing done. But done in a way where people actually know it's there and visit it and, and it draws attention. That, that would be the ideal thing to me.
Can I, can I respond to that?
Yeah, go ahead.
So there've been a lot of suggestions made. I mean, as wide as you could imagine, from Magnolia Cemetery to Wayside Park to fill in the blank part. And, and I think for us, considering that it was included in our redevelopment plan as a labyrinth at that location is why we stand here today. Could we look at all those locations? Absolutely. You know, we can turn over every stone if we really wanted to. It really comes down to time value of money and, and what that's going to mean to the bottom line. As you saw, we, we spent a considerable amount of money to get the concept drawings for the three locations because there's surveying required. You know, each, each location has different features, has different elevations, has different topography. So nothing's copy and paste, unfortunately. And, you know, based on where we stand with the project in our redevelopment plan, that's why we're here today. As a director for the CRA, I am neutral in this. I'm here to present the information as I collect it. I feel we went above and beyond to, to gain as much input as we can through public workshops where we heavily advertise those. We looked at the three locations that the council allowed us to move forward with on concept drawings. And we have received what I believe is clear agreement with the participants in that meeting. So if the council would like to, to look at somewhere else, we can certainly do that. But I think, again, it just, it goes to where our priorities are as a CRA versus where we said they were going to be a, as it relates to the redevelopment plan. So certainly open to any and all opportunities. But this is kind of where we are. In order to define some of those other things, we talked about brick pavers, putting names on them, flagpoles, lights, no lights, hide a monument, you know, vertical monument. In order to get to those detailed conversations, we've got to have a location. Because again, each location's different. And so we're, we're certainly, I, I'm going to speak for my board, but I, I think that there is interest to do whatever we can to move this project forward. But the task that we were assigned was to look at these locations, get some input, and that's what we've done.
Yes, ma'am.
Can we just fast forward? Let's pretend that the location's been picked. And at the end, is this, who maintains all of this at the end? Who pays for the electricity and the lights and the? Have we gone that far to think ahead, those many steps? Because is that going to fall upon us as an additional? And who puts up the, I heard you just say flagpoles. Who's going to put up the flags every day? I mean, are the veterans groups coming forward to, to help with this?
I, I would like to think that there would be some volunteerism there. I mean, the short answer to that question is it would be a city, you know, facility through our tenure, which again, sunsets on September 30th of 2033. I think there's some opportunity for us to, to fund maintenance of the improvement. But subsequently, it will be the city's responsibility, as would be with any improvement that we make. So any of the capital improvements that we have projected to construct, those would have to be maintained. And those costs would have to be figured out at some point.
Okay. Thank you, Josh.
Mayor?
Yeah.
One of our citizens that's on our beautification board came up with an excellent idea about putting one of those Camping World type flags at the Wayside Park because it's such, it's such a key location that everybody that comes through that intersection, you know, there, there's no doubt in anybody's mind, this is an all-American town, you know? And I ran this idea by Kobe. And he said that there was some utility issues there with Florida power, that we couldn't do that. Do you remember this conversation at all?
It depends on, it depends on location. So because of the easement for, we provided to FPL, they, they intend to run large transmission lines to the intersection. to the intersection and then down 331 South. So, I mean, that would definitely be a consideration, depending on the size and location and proximity to those lines, expected lines.
And another possible location, this is my next, the last comment on the subject, is if you're standing in the middle of the road of US 90, looking right square at the courthouse, on the right side, there's vacant property, it's a yard. That's the courthouse. That's the county seat. That's a very important location. They've got bathrooms, they've got cameras. And since it's going to be on their courthouse yard, a little icing on the cake is that they would be maintaining it, if the county would go along with that. Now, that's just an idea. And my last comment is, when we open up the floor to public comment, I'd like for the veterans, if you would, I'd like to hear your suggestion on a location. We want the Veterans Memorial.
Thank you. Well, I can say this, I know that we say we want to hear from the public. We've heard a great deal from the public, and we're hearing a lot more at the very last minute this week. You know, I've gotten four or five emails. But anyway, so I appreciate what you've done, Josh, and I know that you've tried to do this as transparently as possible. And so I appreciate the way you've done it. Whether, you know, we've been persuaded otherwise, that's one thing. But I just want to let you know, I appreciate the way you've done this with all transparency.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
All right, anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
To respond to Mr. Birman, when this started, the very first question on the slide was, "Do you want a monument or do you want a memorial?" And there's all kinds of memorials, Memorial Park, Memorial Picnic Place, Memorial this, that, or the other. And overwhelming me, it was a memorial. And I kept getting the impression, every time I showed this to a group of veterans, they would bend over backwards not to cost the city any money. They wanted their flags to fly when they were having ceremonies, and they could have more ceremonies if they had a space. And perhaps when there were city festivals. The rest of the time, they said, "We need a place to take these down and fold them up because we don't expect the city to put them up and down every day." They kept saying, "Well, we can maintain this." And I kept saying, "No, if it's on city property, they have to decide how it's going to be maintained." I did call Naperville, Illinois, which has the labyrinth that is underwater a lot of times. It's 25 years old. It has been underwater 12 to 15 times, the person who oversees this told me. They put down brick sealers about every three or four years. They do have to trim around it, but down there in the site that the veterans selected, you have to trim twice around the circle and then around the sidewalk. And if there was a labyrinth in there, you'd only have to trim once. Using the bricks as an individual memorial, we said that we should charge more than they actually cost so that that extra money would go for maintenance, go to the city for maintenance. One of the reasons this restarted, initially started in 2009, one of the reasons it restarted was that members of the black community came to me and said, "We've got a little money, but we don't have any land." And part of what their intent was to have something where they could walk to it. So I don't think they would be comfortable in a place where Confederate flags flying and there's a Confederate monument.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, can you ask somebody to fix the microphone? They're saying they can't hear in the back of the room. Let me turn up the speakers.
Okay. Randy Lightner, L-I-G-H-T-N-E-R. My first question is, in those designs, that zigzag there, is that a boardwalk?
Ms. Mayor, point of order. Let your maker comments and not engage in question and answer.
Yeah, you need to direct everybody to-
Okay, sorry. I've just been trying to figure that out. I was hoping to get that answer. I don't want to be ugly, but I'm always known for saying what everyone thinks and won't say it out loud, so I guess I'll stop tonight. My father was in Vietnam, 101st Airborne, on the day I was born. And because of Vietnam, I was raised by a stepdad. Because of Vietnam, I hated my father my entire life. He died when I was 18 years old. And I never got the chance to know him as an adult and be able to tell him that I understood what he went through. So I'm more than, I am appalled that after this many years of trying to get something like this, a person would stoop so low as to attach veterans to it. And I hope that any veteran in this room who has been called here to speak on this now realizes that they're being used. Beyond that, I've lived here my entire 53 years. The one place, I told you last meeting, Police Department, Fire Department, and Lakeyard, you mess with it, I'm coming. We need nothing in that lakeyard. Rebuild the amphitheater, make it nice, upgrade it. Beyond that, positively, nothing else should ever go there. Because once you open that door, how do we close it? There's going to be another group, and another, and another, and then the lakeyard is lost forever. And that would be a heartbreak for me. And just one other thing I want to mention, that the circular sidewalk that's there right now throughout the years, it's never been properly maintained. So how are we going to maintain a whole, entire labyrinth? That doesn't make sense. We can't even keep the one little sidewalk. I mean, I love it, it's beautiful, I like it there, but it just, year over year, it's, we all know, it's never been maintained properly. And I think the world of Mr. Irving, on a personal note, I've spoken with him several times lately. He seems like a wonderful person. But I hope that later on tonight, we also plug the CRA leak, $22,500 for what? And just to say, I think Wayside Park is an excellent idea. And in closing, I just want to say that after tonight, I hope this is put to bed permanently and forever. And that any talk moving forward of a veterans monument be brought to you by veterans. There's a man in here tonight who can lead the charge, get some veterans in here to decide. And I think it should be veterans and no one else who talk with the city about doing that. Absolutely no one else. Thank you.
Anyone else? Come on.
Talking about veterans, well, you're looking at one. 28 years, United States Air Force. Five years enlisted, the rest is an officer. Fixed planes, flew planes, three combat in Iraq, Afghanistan, Kuwait, all them wonderful places. All these other people in here that are veterans, and I see several, we all swore an oath. We swore an oath. I swore an oath when I was 18 years old to protect all y'all, all y'all, this whole country, from everybody that was going to come after you, going to try to kill you, and anything else. My job was to fly fighter. I dropped, I couldn't tell you how many bombs in the middle of a desert. Can't tell you how many times I was shot at. How many times I was told I couldn't arm my weapons. But I'm a veteran. The guys in Vietnam, Korea, my dad was WWII combat medic. Bronze Star for valor. Two Purple Hearts. He was going after people that were dying. What I was doing, I was dumping bombs on people trying to kill them because they wanted to kill all of us. Yeah, we needed a memorial. We definitely needed a memorial. We don't need to get in this pickle of arguing over where it's going to be because this person don't like that, that person don't like this. We need to come together as a group, like we do in the military. We come together as a group. You're a veteran, you know what I'm talking about.
Yes, sir.
I'm a retired major. We come together as a group and we figure this out. We don't talk here, we don't talk there, we don't talk over here. We come together and we figure out a game plan. And that's what we do as veterans, that's what we do as military. I wouldn't go say nothing tonight, but I've heard so much crap, you might well say, from this one, that one, and the other thing, round time, everything else. I've been called everything from SOB on, and all I was doing was my job. But instead of trying to talk it done, as we say in the military, we need to put boots on the ground and do something about it. We don't talk it done. We need to put action behind the words. But we definitely, we have a lot of veterans in this area. Biggest, one of the biggest Air Force bases in the world, Fort Rucker, it's color naval air, Panama City. We're surrounded by military everywhere, and a lot of us are retired. And a lot of us aren't. We got guys that did four years, they're still a veteran. I don't care if they 21 years old or 201. I'm 65 years old, I've seen some of the worst of the worst, and I really wouldn't care to see none of it again. But we definitely, definitely need to get together, put our heads together, and not have two or three different factions arguing over this, that, and the other thing. I know y'all can probably see where I'm coming from. That's the way I was raised.
Well, we appreciate you, appreciate your service, and we appreciate you stepping up.
Major, major?
Go ahead.
Do you have a preference of location?
Yes, sir, I do. Location one. Lakeyard. I was born and raised here. I've lived here all my life except the time I was in the military. If you're going to put anything in that lakeyard to not necessarily benefit someone, but to show appreciation for what a group of men and women have done for this country, that's where I say you should put it. Don't put it some off-the-wall place back out here in the middle of BF Egypt. Put it where people can see it, they know what it is. People coming down Highway 90, they're going to the beach. They're not stopping here, they're going to the beach.
Thank you very much.
I'm Danny Birch, a lot of y'all know me. I really don't have no preference in where you put it. I kind of agree with him putting it over there. They're driving by a 75 going to the beach. But my biggest concern is how do you get a veteran memorial or a monument out of that thing? That's like a rose garden that the garden club wants to go sit at and reminisce and trim their flowers around. Has nothing to do with a veteran memorial. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim Winneberg, resident. I think I can echo what everybody else said. No one's against a veterans memorial. We wouldn't dream of it. My dad was a veteran, served in the Navy in the Pacific in WWII. I appreciate everything that you guys have done for us. And this is one of the things that you have done, is allowed us to have the freedom to speak out, and even though it might not be, you know, what everybody agrees with. I'm personally extremely opposed to it, and this is a hill that I will die on because our lakeyard is precious. We have managed to protect it for 150 years by not mucking it up with stuff. And I don't mean the veterans memorial is stuff, but potential bathrooms, sidewalks, pavilions, all of that is not appropriate for the lakeyard. Not to, and there's a deed that does protect what can be put in that lakeyard. If you haven't seen it, there's some pretty good protections in there. And more structures are not part of it. That corner, it is an intersection. You can call it a round lake, but that is an intersection where people turn or go straight. Having cars parked on a corner is really a bad idea and a dangerous idea. And why, why would we put something in a place that we know can flood? I don't understand that. Like, so what? It floods, and then it becomes unusable. Why would that be the place to put it? I'm speaking as a citizen, not as a board member. But the Beautification and Tree Board is putting together a master plan for Chipley Park, starting this year, to be presented to the council next year. I think that needs to be done. That needs to be, the council, instead of ad hoc one thing here or there, the council needs to agree or ask us to go back and make changes, but allow the board that you put to help guide you in these things to bring it before you and let you all decide what's best. I will echo what Randy said. It's bothersome that this was a labyrinth until it was a veterans memorial. And it was a labyrinth that couldn't stand on its own merits for a number of years. And the veterans got attached to it, and I don't like that. The veterans deserve their memorial the way they want it with their support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sharon Grenay, resident. And I'm all for veterans. I think we need a memorial. I think we've had a lot of trouble in this city with, we want things, but we don't ever get around to finishing anything. We have the Visitor Center, it's right over there by our museum. There's an area right there that people walk by when they're coming to visit our lakeyards. If you want to have a memorial somewhere that people are going to see, it wouldn't be in the lakeyard, but it would be very prominent. Because unless you're going down in the lakeyard, you're not going to see that labyrinth or whatever else you put down there. If it's up there, where maybe one day we will have our public restrooms in there that we've been talking about for, I'd probably say, five years. If that was finished and the Visitor Center was used appropriately, that is city property, that would be a fantastic place to honor the veterans that we have here.
Thank you. All right, come on.
I keep trying not to come to these meetings, but y'all keep dragging me up here. Michelle Kitch, I'm against the lakeyard 100%. And Mayor and I might be close, but I've been coming to these meetings since Chief Hooks, Carpenter days, was the mayor. And I've seen this labyrinth come before us many times, as utilized with other things. I think Shu Talk Assembly was when it first came forward to them. I have a problem using our veterans for someone to get their way. That's the bottom line, that's what this is. And it's not about our veterans, because out of the two people speaking for it and the engineer, I didn't see any veterans. Why are our veterans not designing it? Why is the VA not involved? We have a chapter, I believe, over at the courthouse. Has anybody decided to, like, see what the veterans really want? Or are they just presenting an idea and making you put a sticker on the same labyrinth idea in different locations? I went to the VFW last week, and I asked five people in there, showing them the picture that is in this, "What is that?" I said what it is. I got told it was a movie, and it was a puzzle. That was at the VFW. I also went and talked to Danny. I also went and talked to Danny right after that because they told me to go over there and talk to them. This is not about our veterans being involved. My dad was a veteran. He's not here and able to speak today. But bottom line is, we were here nine months ago. We were here. There was objection to the lake yard, but yet we got two things brought back on the lake yard. Why is that? Because that's been the idea for 15 years. Rejected by Chautauqua Assembly, rejected by the council. I think we need to get off this idea and build something for our veterans in a location that's appropriate for everybody. I don't want to see somebody in a wheelchair try to get down to a flooded area at our lake yard. Bottom line. So I also know that we turned over the, I can't think of the name of it, but it's on 83, it's the ballparks that we were maintaining at one time.
Harvesting field.
Did we turn those back over to the county to maintain?
The, the property is state owned, but is in a lease agreement with the city in which we do now do have an interlocal agreement with the county, Walton County Board of County Commissioners, that they maintain the field. The city still maintains the community center, the skate park, and fire department.
Okay. Why did we do that?
I can't speak, that was council action, I believe, in 2022.
Because we didn't have manpower to maintain the fields? And you're talking about building something else? If we don't get our veterans involved in this to help maintain it? I'm sorry, I keep seeing the same two people talking about and pushing an agenda. And I got a problem with that because that's not about our veterans. And when you bring me something that's about our veterans, I'll stand up here and 100% be for it. But I'm not for the labyrinth and I'm not for the locations. Thank you. Tennis court, I don't have a problem with, just because if we get bathrooms, that would be solve two problems. But I don't know that that's where they want it either. So, thank you.
Thank you. Just go ahead.
Rudy Malt, the engineer. Just wanted to clarify a few things. There was a couple of questions, you know, asked.
Can we wait, let, mayor, let's have all public comments.
Okay. All right. All right, we're going to have a couple more. Let me see. Somebody on the very back, back there? Yeah. Come on.
Good evening, everybody.
Hey.
I promised to be brief. I appreciate all the discussion, pro and con.
Your name for the record.
Name is Bill Brock. My wife and I are residents here, the historic district. Just want to let you know that we are in favor of the veterans memorial down at the, the lake yard. It seems like a tasteful, thoughtful design, and we would support it. I'm not a veteran. My wife is a veteran. I have an uncle that was a veteran, who's now in the bottom of Tokyo Bay. His name is Lawrence Edge, commander of the Bonefish. And if you go ahead with the memorial, I'll be happy to buy a brick for $100 and put his name on it. So we do support that concept. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you. One more.
Hello. My name is Creighton Deng DePchanti. I'm an airborne ranger, 24 years in, in Army. So retired. I am the commander of the Disabled American Veterans here Association, going back to the cleanliness of the area. So I believe that my chapter and probably the VFW will take care of our memorial ourselves without the city's help if we see it, you know, in disarray. To assist with the, the funding and stuff, we will volunteer to take care of our memorial. As in, you know, I'm, I'm only 49, but being in 24 years, I think I still got 40 more years to take care of my memorial. But I like to have the number one pick that was at, as a veteran. Putting out my vote for where we need to have it at. But to clarify all the funding and the cleanliness and the stuff like that, I think I, our organization, the DAV, will put up our own little small memorial. It'll say DAV on it, and then we will take care of it volunteering from the VFW to help clean up the area, wherever we find a place to put it at. But I recommend that we close out the location. All right, that's, that's the key thing. I don't want to push it, keep on pushing it another year and another year. So if I've already had it at my organization with all about 30 veterans in there, we're wanting them, we discussed it, everything about it, we should have some input into that. I mean, they gathered up the data for us. So that's my input. Any questions for me?
Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Danny. All right. All right, we have a motion and a second.
Sorry, just really quick.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted a quick clarification. So questions were being asked, what, what does the labyrinth have to do with the military? Nothing. The labyrinth is more of a meditative tool to, I guess, help with their healing, PTSD. A maze is meant to take you on paths, trick you. The labyrinth takes you to a, a path, and you follow it, and you get to the center. And there's, there's healing powers to that. As an engineer, I was attracted to the geometry and the science behind that. So anyways, just want to give that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, so we have a motion, second on the floor. Any comments from the sides? All in favor, say aye.
Yep.
Will you just rephrase what the, what is the motion?
All right, go ahead, repeat the motion.
What's your motion?
I'm 100% for the veterans memorial. And I'd like to vote nay, recommend we vote nay, on the location on the lake yard.
So the motion is to deny the position of the memorial going in the lake yard, but not to deny, to decline to do the memorial. So basically, go back to the drawing board and find any other location but the lake yard.
Point of order. There's already been a council motion.
She can't call point of order.
That would be located in the lake.
This mayor, she can't call point of order.
And the council's free to take that up. I'd, I'm confident Mr. Cosin was not on the council when that motion happened.
Yes, he was.
Does council in the last four months has voted to place this in the lake yard?
Josh Conners did.
For within the last four months?
What?
He did, he did. I don't think he meant to, but he did.
Did you vote for it?
I must have been absent.
You can pull the motion up if you like.
Well, let's figure out who voted for it. Because it's a ripe reconsideration if he voted for it.
Yeah.
I don't recall, I mean, if it passed, it passed, but I doubt, did anybody vote against it? I doubt it.
What I remember, the last time.
Josh just said Chipley Park, what he said.
You called a meeting, I'll verify. It's just a matter of whether he can make the motion or not, is the only question then.
Yeah. Come on.
He was on the council in September.
Mayor, the, the date that I have for that direction from the council is on January the 13th of this year.
So Councilman Cosin was not yet elected, therefore is well within his purview to make the motion to bring it before the council?
Good enough.
All right.
Motion's well taken.
So we got a vote?
We're voting to keep the project, but not in the location of the circle. Was that correct?
We're shelving the project until we find a location.
But we are declining the lake yard as that.
Yes, sir.
Chipley Park specifically.
Yes, sir.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
For a vote, I'd just like to say that, you know, veterans' voices matter. This memorial is obviously important to us. And to see it through, the location seems to be the problem. I personally have heard from more negative comments about the location being in Chipley Park than I have that voted to put it there. We are a city of quickly approaching 7,000 people. And we, we have a lot, a lot of people's opinion to consider on this, and it's not easy. I vote aye.
How did you vote? I could hear you.
Aye.
Aye.
That's Carrie. Thank you very much. All right, hopefully we have enough interest to look for another location. Okay.
It was real conceptual, is that?
All right, so. Do we want to take a recess, Ms. Mayor, or do we want to? Let's go a little bit further. Okay. All right, W, I guess we're going to 4C1?
Oh, I stopped when he started moving forward.
All right, W.
Thank you, mayor. 4C1 is update and direction on Senate Bill 180 and land development code rewrite. I believe Mr. Atkinson is prepared to provide that update on Bill 180. And then the second part of that, after Mr. Atkinson finishes, is staff is looking for direction on the contract that we, the city has with Kim Lee Hawn to do the land development code update in lieu of Senate Bill 180. So I'll let Mr. Atkinson go first.
So the legislature passed and the governor signed Senate Bill 180. You've heard me speak about it a couple of times before, most notably related to the potential moratorium on sign ordinance. The largest impacts for us from a land development perspective are we are not able to place moratorium from one year from the date of a storm event going back to last year. And then retroactive August 1, 2024, we are prohibited from making any amendment to our land development code comprehensive plan or any other land development policy that is more restrictive or burdensome than the laws that were in effect at the time. Considering we're doing a complete rewrite of our land development code, it is entirely fair to say that there will at least be some elements that are more burdensome or restrictive. We are prohibited from making those changes for a period of three years, which is, which would take us to 2027. So in light of that, and to Mr. Townsend's second point, we have a contract let to begin land development code rewrite. We could well go through with that contract and simply not accept the proposal and shelve it. Whether it would still be valid in three years, that's a fair question. We can request to cancel the contract, which is likely the most prudent thing to do. But you do have a hybrid option, which would be allow Mr. Townsend to advise them that in light of Senate Bill 180 is our desire to cancel the contract for the rewrite before we incur any cost in case we can't. But ask, would they be willing to hold the price in the contract until legislative session starts in January of this year to see if any legislative relief is handed down from our delegation to areas that may not have been the prime targets of 180? That would also be prudent, although I say we can ask that, we can't compel the company to agree to that. They may have other projects they wish to take on. But ultimately, we don't need to incur a lot of money rewriting our land development code when we cannot actually adopt it. So, need some guidance from the council.
Ms. Mayor, I'll start us off. I, I'm, I'm of the opinion that I think we should, we should carry on. We have the contract. I understand that that process is going to be a lengthy process. And so we could perhaps find ourselves in a situation where we get to the end of that project and then we have to wait to implement it for a period of time, probably a year or so. But as the chair of the committee that is trying to rewrite a large portion of our code, I recognize that our LDC is in desperate need of a rewrite. And, and I firmly believe that no matter what we do, that needs to occur. And if, if we are delayed in implementation, so be it. I also, just based on some very initial conversations that I've had, I firmly believe, and I don't want to say too much, but I firmly believe that we will more than likely get some legislative relief because I don't think that everyone realizes the actual impact that this is having on municipalities and even counties. And so I think that there's probably going to be some relief in the next session. So that's, my opinion is that I think we should carry on. We have the contract. A lot of what they're going to produce, I would, I would venture to say that probably 95% of it we're going to keep no matter what.
But I'll ask you, because I know you've kind of done a little homework on it. What is your prediction, or maybe W, your prediction of time for them to have done it? Either way, whether we could have implemented or not?
The consulting firm?
Yes.
We gave them, if I'm not mistaken, Chris, I believe we gave them two years, but the contract is for either 16 or 18, is their expectation. But we, we give them the ability up to two years for the rewrite.
Okay.
Is that correct, Chris?
Two years. You're good, that 18 months with a two-year window for completion.
Yes, sir.
Yep.
Okay. I mean, that makes your suggestions a whole lot more valid. Go ahead.
Sir, I'm thinking along the same, the same lines. If we, if we went ahead and did the rewrite, it could be a two-year process, up to a two-year process. We, and we would have to shelf it, right? But if we wait two years to, to, to start rewriting it then, there could be another named storm and we have to shelf that one, you know, and, and not be able to utilize that. Is that correct?
Yeah, every time there's a new storm, it kicks it three more years out if there is not legislative relief. And, and I, Colonel Councilman Beerbaum, it seems like there's a chance there's going to be some legislative relief. I just wondered, before we spend this kind of money, I wanted the council to be aware, there's a waiting period.
So if we, if we rewrite it and it has to be, and it has to be shelved, we can always amend it, you know, down the pipe and, and not have to rewrite the entire thing. But it would be ready to go. As soon as they release this to change our codes, we can. People are screaming, I'm telling you. I've heard more complaints about our, our recent developments and the total clearing of trees. Total absolute clearing of trees to build. I know that's profitable. It's the quickest, fastest way to build. But we are Tree USA City. And that's something I personally would like to see us be able to do, and sooner rather than later, you know, in these codes. So that we can, we can save some trees that where neighborhoods already have existing shade trees and cooling elements of those neighborhoods, instead of waiting 30 years for them to be able to sit in the shade of a tree. So, so to me, the sooner we do this, the better, even if we have to shelf it and amend it when the time comes.
Kobe, do you endorse this?
I believe it's been, it has been my stance, all the council members, including Councilman Conners who isn't here, and, and the mayor, and Mr. Atkinson. Mr. Atkinson, I talked about, it's my recommendation we do move forward, as Mr. Beerbaum and Councilman Harrison have discussed. Because for a number of reasons, we budgeted specifically for this this year. We anticipate to budget next year for it. That was our conversation last year. And so we, we will continue to do the same thing. With it being a two-year process, it's going to give the council ample time to have those conversations on what they would like to see the city look like moving forward.
Motion to approve?
There's no, there's no motion to approve. You've already approved it. Just wanted to make sure you don't want to stand down. So unless there's a motion to stand down, and I want to encourage the council, it's just going to be the limitation on the adoption of it. And so as long as the council understands you've got to do this, yeah, it may end up being reworked three or four times by the time we get done if we don't get legislative relief. But the last thing I wanted was you to have a contract you just signed. Somebody come back in 16 months and say, why haven't we adopted this? Well, we can't. Why did we spend all this money on something we couldn't do? Why didn't anybody tell us? That's what Kobe and I's job is, to make sure you're aware of that implication. But so, but there's, as long as the council's willing to do it, I can assure you, we do need to update land development code, and we will have to do it eventually.
Let's move forward.
Okay. Works.
Any other implications of 180 that we need to do? They can't, they can't close the doors.
No, sir. Sir, hold on, we can't close that door. No, sir.
Yeah.
I see the city marshal, Mr. Hurley, you mind helping us out?
Hey, chief, can we help it out outside there? Chief Shubbs is going out again. We do have some emergency management discussions, but those will be handled with administration. Those are the biggest ones. And they're quite heavy. We also have some other ones that we're working to do.
We don't need a motion. 1080 and 784.
Oh, there's not, we're not going to vote on it? I just want to.
No, 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 this already been voted on. It's really not.
Oh, okay. I disagree. I don't think we should spend the money, but that's, I'm always on that losing end of the.
All right, well, let's move on. Kobe, if you're ready, 42. 4C2?
Yes, mayor, thank you. Discussion on the funding of the Community Redevelopment Agency, and I'll let Mr. Atkinson take this one.
I'll just, well, I'm going to open the conversation, but just saying, councilwoman, I think you asked three, maybe four meetings ago now. Hey, are we going to have this back in enough time? This is the enough time. This is the meeting where I need the council to make that call before the August 1 deadline of the certification of values. We start submitting forms. I'd like us to go and have that conversation. And if possible, I'd like the board to take action to express its intent tonight to keep the CRA the same, reduce the funding, reduce the size, whatever it is this council wants to do with it. Let us know it now so that we can program all that in over the month of August. So when it comes time for budget, we are not out of time.
Go ahead.
Everybody knows I desire to reduce, I know that there's a match that we'll get from the county, but there are so many projects that are of necessity needs for our citizens. I really would like to see us reduce the 95% to a 50%, at least. I really would like to see us reduce the 95% to a 50%, at least for one to two cycles so that we can use that money within our preview to do what we need to do for the citizens.
I just want to make a comment. The, you know, the county's contribution is a, is major for us. I think the real secret is, and I think that we've got a working group with the CRA. If they will, we can't dictate to them what they do. But if we have a good communication and they sort of follow our lead and they get the things done that we want done, we're going to have more money to do it. If we start cutting back and county cuts back, we don't know when we'll get them back. There's no guarantees we'll get the county's money back.
I want, can I just add one more?
Go ahead.
To that, but the CRA has now got a reserve of $4 million. They have a fund balance of four plus million dollars. So what is their 20?
They have about 1.8 million, Josh, where are you at? Total. I don't know what's combined and what you're looking at, but.
I was looking at their standalone financial statements issued by the auditors.
Yeah, so we, we carried over Josh Urban, CRA, for the record. We carried over, I believe it was 814,184 dollars, if that number is, is correct, somewhere around that. Some of which has been allocated already during the budgeting process for this fiscal year that we're in now. And an additional 414,000 is going to be brought forward to my board at our next meeting for them to formally amend to a budget movement. But that is the carry forward from the previous year, 814,000 and some change.
But since inception, how much have you all accumulated in your fund balance reserves at, at the end of this fiscal year?
Yeah, I believe all that money was, was allocated previously, so I don't, I don't think there's anything left in the actual fund balance.
Are you saying, I'm sorry, are you just saying you guys have it set aside for certain projects? Is that what you mean?
So any, any monies that was left over in the previous year, they were allocated in accordance with Part 3 of 163 and allocated to a project. We do that each year. But last year, through that auditing process, we budgeted, if I'm not mistaken, a carry forward amount of 400,000. Through the reconciliation, it was determined that we had an additional 414,000 to, to bring forward and be allocated in accordance with that same statute. So it's my understanding, this fiscal year that we're currently operating in, that is the balance, was 814,000.
Fund balance at the end of the year, per the audit.
Was 814,000?
Yes, no 4 million. No organization's never had 4 million dollars.
But now, to add to that, 1.511944 went in this year. So 814, 1.5. But yeah, spent money out, so.
So fellow council members, I, I kind of want to talk you through some of my logic here, so hopefully you can track with me. I've always viewed the CRA as a way to force the council's hand at living within our means. And to, to go now and reduce the CRA's funding, we, we lose out on the city, I'm sorry, the county and the city funding. Unique projects that as, as a council with the general fund dollars, we would not otherwise be able to fund. Putting them into the CRA gives them a unique designation. And some of these projects, we would not be able to do and fund otherwise. So that, that's my first thing. And, and to, to kind of carry that thought forward, if we live within our means and continue to fund the CRA as we have at the current levels, that forces us to set a budget that when the CRA finally expires, if we stick to the plans that we have previously talked about in our workshops in the last couple of months, we're suddenly looking at a windfall in our general fund budget of several million dollars that we can then turn around and actually put towards street paving, sidewalks and that sort of thing because we have sacrificed in the short term. And we have kind of put our head down and saved so that we can then, when the CRA sunsets, we then have all those project, unique projects done that we otherwise couldn't do, but we now have this money coming to us that used to go to the CRA that then gets released back to us that we can then start funding all of these other projects. So it forces us to live within our means now so that we are set up for success in the future. So that's why I'm, I'm not in favor at this time of reducing the CRA funding. I agree with the mayor. I think that if, while we can't dictate to them directly, I think that we have a good CRA board. And, and I personally know a lot of the members on there, and I think they're fantastic people. And I think that their, their willingness, and I've even had direct conversations with the director, their willingness to help the city out is there, and it hasn't been in the past, and that's, that's okay. That's all right. But it's there now, and I think we give them a chance at full, full funding levels because once we reduce this, there's no going back. Once, once we reduce that funding, if we decide to up it again the next year, the county has to vote whether they would re-up it again. And I don't know that we would get that. I don't know. And to me, that's not something I'm willing to roll the dice on. I say we continue at the current levels. We, we work and live within our means. That, that does force us to make some difficult decisions about how we fund things right now. But it sets us up for the future long-term from a funding perspective.
Go ahead.
Well, I'd like to see some real, some hard numbers on what we're looking at. If, if we cut the percentage, what are we losing county? If we, you know, back to that discussion that we didn't want to have because it's a longer route, but adjusting the map, shrinking the map. We know that a lot of development, high-value property development is going to occur on the south side of town. CRA gets 95% of that, right, of that additional ad valorem. So when we are talking about, do we keep our fire department? Do we let the county take it? We're talking about, do we have to cut personnel? Those conversations right there are not, those, those are, those are, we got to find a way for the CRA to help us with, with that additional funding if we leave the map as it is. So, but I would like to see some numbers. I can't, I can't, I don't like to make emotional decisions. I would like to see what exactly we're looking at if that percentage is reduced or if that, if the, if the CRA district, which is the entire city, limits, if that is reduced. I know that's a time-consuming route, but it's a hard conversation for, for me. I, I want to see, I, I was the one that asked us to have workshops and improve communications with the CRA so we could get on the same page and work together in accomplishment. They've gone through, you know, growing pains and, and learning curve, and, and we all are. We are. I certainly am. But we need, you know, and I believe in making things be successful. We got to make it work, but we have to also be realistic when we're talking about, you know, potentially losing employees because of our budget or our carryover issues that we want to resolve and those types of things. We're keeping our fire department. Most people I talk to want to keep the fire department. I haven't talked to a soul yet that wants to see it go. Not in our residents. So just like the Veterans Memorial, I have to listen to what I hear from, from citizens and, and residents. So, so I, I've got to have something to make these decisions on. I've, I've talked to Kobe briefly about this. I don't, I know we, we canceled our budget workshop Friday. This has to be decided, the CRA issue by Monday, if I'm correct, because the TIF submittal has to be turned in August 1st. So, 4th, okay. So would you consider, you know, maybe having a special meeting so that we can discuss and have those numbers to consider, I mean, hard, as hard as we can get those numbers by either reduction or amount reduction or whatever it is. I'm, I'm like you, Councilman Beerbaum, I just, I would like to see, to see our work. It has to work. We need, we need it to work. We need it to give us a city some relief in the future. And I think those things can more clearly be worked out and defined. But would, would, would a special meeting before the 4th date, would, would it be productive? Or do you all feel like we can do this tonight? Because I, I mean, I don't, I don't know the, I don't know the impact. I don't know the financial impact of doing these things yet.
So, Mayor, Ms. McDaniel's put together, she, and I think she's given, so if we, we can, if you have a question on a certain percentage, she can tell you exactly what those changes would be. But the map, that would be a much more complicated process. We would have to go to the operator's office to get those.
That, that is unlikely to be able to be done prior to August 4th.
Prior to the 4th.
Yeah, it would require them to pull all that out. But the percentages, we do have that. Danielle has put that together over the weekend.
Jesse will put it up. He has it.
Jesse can put that up if you have any questions. Yeah. So she did it through, Ms. McDaniel did it through every 5% down. So you'll see a bunch of line items. I'll answer any questions you may have on any of that.
So I gave you two columns of historical data. That's the first two. Can you blow it up a little bit, Jesse?
Zoom in just a little bit, Jesse, and just show the current column G, or just work through column G. All right, scroll it to the top, please. That'll work.
So in, in order to make this work with the different variant things, I put things that come off the DR 420, your amounts, so it would calculate. And then I verified in the system today by doing some of them randomly that it did match what would shoot out on the 4, DR 420. So currently, your rollback rate, because of the increase in the CRA this year is a higher number than normal. Usually it'd be a little less, so you get the same amount of taxes, but that's not the case this year.
That's true with most TIPS, by the way, when you're saying increased values.
5.5287 is rollback. Well, as you adjust the CRA percentage, it adjusts that number. It'll take that number down, which makes it look like, so if you were to cut it 50%, that would be a reduction to what the city would gain, 526,569 in ad valorem, the budgetable amount, 95%. But it would also make you have an increase of taxes of 34.45%. The county portion would go from 722,569 down to 380, 300. So it would significantly reduce them as well.
So Danielle, to be clear, on the 34.45%, the actual amount of dollars collected would stay the same. But because of the rollback, because of the reduction, it would seem to be a 34% increase to city ad valorem collection, but it is not the same dollar amount.
It's because you're undedicating that money.
To be clear, that will though be what you're going to advertise when we're undads in the papers when you start getting the calls. We didn't go up on taxes.
That's if we kept it at rollback, is what you're saying.
No, no, that's a 5.5. It's affecting your rollback number. It takes rollback. If you were to do the 50%, it takes rollback to 4.0906, where it's currently 5.5287. Playing with the dedicated value affects your rollback number, is all I'm trying to say.
So the notice is going to say that.
We increase taxes 34%.
Only if we, only if we adopt rollback, right?
No, if you adopt 5.5. So if we stay at 5.5.
And you cut the CRA to 50%, it'll be a 34-plus percent increase, and that's what you have to advertise.
Which equates to how much cash?
It would be an additional 526,569 actual dollars to our budget because you can only budget ad valorem at 95%. So that's, our 95% total would be 1,939,633 for us. And that, right now, our amount is 1,413,064 is what we're going to net after giving the CRA.
So, so we're going to gain $500,000 to the general fund. And this council has worked hard in the last couple of workshops to come up with a plan for getting our transfers to zero so that we can then invest in our infrastructure. And to me, I don't want to take a shortcut to getting to that by reducing the CRA funding and saying, okay, well, we accomplished the goal because we've put 500 grand back into the general fund. I think that that shortcuts the hard work, the good work that we're doing to make sure this city is the most efficient operating government as possible. And so when, once the CRA finally falls away, we then have these funds available that we can then, at that point, because we've done the hard work now, we then are able to look at those, these dollars and say, okay, now we can put this towards paving, now we can put this towards sidewalks, now we can put this towards parks or whatever else we want to do. But we've got to make the sacrifices today. And that's, that's difficult. That's not easy. You know, we, we've had, already had some workshops that are not fun. But I just, I firmly believe that if we do this now, I, I don't think that that's where, that's accomplishing what we want to accomplish long-term.
I'm sorry. The CRA is handcuffed to what they can potentially help us with. So if, there are certain restrictions on the CRA spending money for us to help us maintain certain things that you all were talking about. They can't repair our roads or, or, I don't know what the whole limitation. No, but my point is they're handcuffed as to what they can really help with what we have to do. If that money didn't leave our checkbook and stayed with us, then we have, here on this dais, have the option of, you know, through our budget process, to put that money where it needs to be for the needs of the city. And, and I can tell you that, what, what year did the CRA come into effect? 2018?
18 is the first to affect.
What project has really accumulated that, that, that we've accomplished since then? So 18, that's about seven years. I mean, I know things.
Yeah, they had to, they had to let, let it accumulate.
My goodness, didn't we give them a million dollars last year? I can't recall, but I was thinking 900.
But like, for the first three years, they were getting like $20,000. They couldn't even hire a director for that to actually move a plan forward.
The first year the council served as the, the city council itself served as the CRA the very first year, and city manager served from 18 all the way through 22 as the executive director of the organization as a cannot afford one.
I, I, again, I think that there are unique opportunities with the CRA to help us with their dollars. And, and based on the workshop that, that Mr. Harrison called, that we were, we, we met with the CRA members, there's a willingness there to help us with that. And I, again, I'm quoting Josh, but Josh has a willingness to help us.
I understand that. I believe that they do. I do believe that.
So I, I firmly believe that if we do this, we're just taking a shortcut because that money's going to go back into the general fund and we're going to go, pressure's off of us, man. We got an extra 500 grand in the general fund. We're, we're good. And then it's, it's, it's the path of least resistance.
So that 500, that $500,000 could be potentially, I mean, yeah, if we had it, it'd be great. But if CRA spent $500,000 and saved us from having to worry about $500,000, then it's working like it's supposed to be. And that's my only point. I want it to work the way it's supposed to work. Okay.
Go ahead.
You hear him. Oh, I want it to work too, but you know, we were talking about them helping us, like, for example, at the lake yard with the amphitheater, which I was super stoked about until I had a conversation just this past few days with Josh. And I said, Josh, how much, where are we on that project? Because I know that was part of the plan for y'all to help us do something there. And we talked about, well, how much would that estimate cost? He said $4 million. And I, I asked him, I said, what are they making the, what are they redoing it with? Gold bricks? I mean, I can't imagine that we would spend $4 million to upgrade our amphitheater when we've got infrastructure that we need in such a desperate way. And that's a, you know, that's not a necessity of life. So, I mean, I'm just thinking about some other things and the timing, and I, I just, I disagree. I appreciate what we're all sharing, but I just, I disagree.
So in 2000, April 2019, when I came into office, city manager Smigelski was the manager at that point. And of course, we had a conversation and he, I need you to get support of the CRA. It's going to be a good thing. There's going to be money available. It's not going to be for the next couple of years, but eventually there'll be some money in there that can go to the law enforcement, police department, stuff like that. I feel like we're finally at that point. I understand. Um, I understand the frustration and the thought of, you know, let's fund a lot of money here. Um, I've got an agenda item on their next meeting to fund some of my budget stuff. I I truly believe there's ways to fund projects. We just have to take them project to them and say, this is what we need. Does it fit within your realm of funding? But we we had to take those individual projects and give them to them, say, this is what we're trying to accomplish. Can the CRA by statute accomplish that? Same thing I've done with with Mr. Urban. Um, me and him took a field trip to Fort Walton Beach and met with their CRA director. And and my whole thing was, help me figure out how we can fund some of our projects in our town with how you do. And and she had a lot of great ideas. Um, and I'm doing exactly what Mr. Harrison just said. I'm going to them saying, this is what I got. This is what I need to figure out how to fund. Can you do it? Not sure if they're going to approve it next week, but I feel pretty good that there's there's going to be a good chance for it. So I would say as a as our departments are budgeting for projects, whether it's sidewalks or infrastructure, anything like that, they need to have these conversations with the CRA before bringing it, putting on our regular, um, general fund budget. Can we get this funding other places? There there's revenue in Walton County. We as a city got to figure out how to tap into that revenue.
I I can't think of a better example of I I think that's a great point. I can't think of a better example of the revenue that we collect and the revenue that the county collects being spent within the city limits. That that's what the five of us are here to do. When 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 it comes to revenues, whether it's state tax, federal tax, whatever, our job is to make sure that as much of that money comes back to Defoeak Springs for the Defoeak Springs residents that paid it as possible. And to me, the CRA is one of the many fucking, uh, funding mechanisms that we can do to bring that back. So from that perspective, like, it's it's vital that we advocate for those funding mechanisms to show up here in Defoeak Springs. And again, CRA is one of those mechanisms.
Yeah.
Oh, what project are you having?
So our our flock camera system, um, it's been funded through grants over the last two years. Those grants are ending. Um, we've had great success solving crime, preventing crime through them. Um, and that's what we're going to take to the CRA for them to fund. Um, and that's going to take it out of our our budget request.
And that's an acceptable limit on their spending.
Chief, do you find that? Do you find that as a community policing innovation?
Oh, yeah, hundred percent.
And that is expressed about the statute.
But you've had it for
Yes, we we've had it for two years. We've got two separate contracts. Um, so the first one we got through an FDI legal grant we funded. That grant funding is ending. It actually ended this month. Um, Flock's gracious enough to keep us going, uh, for the second, but that's why, you know, i- i- if if what I'm hearing through all my the budget workshops and everything is, hey, we need to tighten our belt and figure out, you know, what's what's priority, what's not. You know, I I don't overextend my spending as, you know, I try to keep it as in-house as I can, but you know, there's there's certain things like those cameras that are very beneficial to our citizens in solving crime, preventing crime, um, helping us do our job that I won't be able to fund because we we need to cut. It's not. It's not a hundred percent of priority. But as far as solving crime, it it helps our solvability rate tremendously. Um, and it's a simple tool. So and trust me, if I can squeeze every dime out of that bunch, I will. Same with with any other taxation organization. If I can figure out how to get money back to the city, I'm going to do it. So.
You know something? I think all of us believe you. Go ahead, Dan.
Okay, so, um, I've got a few notes here I'd like to share, but first of all, if this went forward, how long would it take for the CRA to die a natural death?
Two thousand and thirty three.
Twenty thirty three is your sunset. Seven effective years, eight cat, eight years if you read it, five to thirty three, but it's seven effective years.
So if we go forward with this, we've got eight years of the CRA?
Seven budget years, yes.
Okay. So some of the notes that I'd like for you to please think about. Right now, we give approximately a million dollars of our taxpayers' money to the CRA and every year that goes up. We give the CRA ninety five percent of the ad valorem tax increase. That is the maximum in Florida statutes. This is what the council decided. I don't even know if you were on the board then or not.
No, no one here was. The mayor was the mayor, but.
In its infant stage, the council went the maximum of any tax increase. The CRA gets ninety five percent off the top and we only get five percent. So that goes straight to the CRA. In the map, uh, the the geographical area that the CRA collects this money from, the ninety five percent of the ad valorem tax increase. They're not even providing any services there. They're mostly south of the interstate. And there's no talk about providing any services there. And what they're doing is taking money that we should be using for infrastructure. And I'll go into infrastructure, uh, a little more. The CRA is basically depriving the citizens of Defoeak Springs badly needed infrastructure updates such as replacing a hundred plus year old clay pipes, badly needed streets resupersing, sidewalks, streetlights, park updates, and the list goes on and on. Um, I almost forgot to mention that if we continue on this course we're on, we're already talking about having staff reductions. We're giving a boatload of money, a million dollars a year, and the county that got uh, one point seven million dollars to operate on. And that's maximum. We're not taking care of ourselves. We're not taking care of our citizens and we're not giving them the basic life amenities that they deserve. We're postponing paving the roads. We're postponing replacing our clay pipes. We're doing patchwork now. And we got a plan to replace them all, but it's not being implemented and we don't have the money to do it. And I was sitting here one day speaking from that podium when the CRA was on the chopping block before. And Todd, you told me that the city can do anything that the CRA can do. And you said, this will jar your memory. And I said, even sell bonds? And you said, yes.
That's correct.
Sell bonds.
They can sell bonds.
So why are we giving them? And and I've heard this comment before. It's not our money. It's the CRA's money. It's our taxpayers' money. And the only reason you can claim it's the CRA's money is because we give our taxpayers hard earned money to the CRA instead of replacing and funding the money that we need to to replace these pipes that are being constantly maintenance on, patchwork. There's so much stuff that we need to be doing for our people. And instead of giving the money away, now if we cut it to fifty percent, then the county is going to, that's going to reduce the counties, uh, to three, three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And it'll reduce what we give them. And they're still going to have, they're still going to have nine hundred thousand dollars a year. Is that right to operate? Almost a million dollars? And if they can't get things done for a million dollars a year, why are we giving them the money? We've already, we've already approved the alleyway, correct? That's a million dollar project. By the time it's said and done, it's going to be a lot more than that.
Answer that question, boy.
So I just don't think we're giving our city the basic quality of life amenities that they deserve. We're saying, y'all put up with those pothole roads. Y'all put up with this patchwork infrastructure. And, um, we're cutting our citizens short. Uh, my vote would be to stop the bleeding and dissolve the CRA. But that's not going to happen. The very least we can do for our citizens is to, instead of them getting the maximum amount, the ninety five percent of the ad valorem tax increase, let us get fifty percent and they get fifty percent. Let's look after our citizens. Let's do something about our infrastructure.
Josh, Mayor, let me just comment on the bonds real quick. We can issue bonds, but we cannot issue bonds on ad valorem money without a referendum. To the extent this is ad valorem money that becomes tax increment finance that goes in CRA trust fund, they can bond that money whereas we cannot. The five hundred thousand you get back, you could not bond without a referendum. So to clarify, the city could sell bonds, but it's going to have to be from a non-ad valorem source.
Okay. As long as it benefits our citizens and we get the infrastructure that they deserve, that we're years behind on.
So I understand the five hundred thousand you're getting back cannot be pledged for debt service.
Mr. Mayor.
That's what I'm saying. The the money you get back cannot be. Their money can be. That is the distinction.
Okay. Josh?
Good evening, uh, Mayor, Council. Reynolds Anderson, Chairman Reynolds Anderson, unfortunately couldn't make it tonight. He had a family emergency, uh, but I I will speak on behalf of the CRA. You know, we're we're finally at a place where we have the revenues to be able to carry out a good percentage of a redevelopment plan update. That plan update that went before you all back on January, uh, of last year, that kind of lays out our framework for how we operate through our time certain for completion, which is September thirtieth of twenty thirty three. I can tell you for the first time in my tenure, I I have a board, uh, that's willing to make decisions, willing to issue contracts, willing to issue task orders. At our workshop, there were three projects that were identified in that workshop with the council, one of which being the alleyway, uh, improvements, the other being the amphitheater, and the last one being our Crescent Drive building, uh, design for a potential art center. I can stand in front in front of you today and let you know that all three of those are under contract for design. Infrastructure takes a lot of money and it takes a lot of time, uh, to get it across the finish line. I think you mentioned the infrastructure, uh, improvements in the alleyways. It wouldn't surprise me one bit if that project's between four and five million dollars before it's all said and done. We already have an estimated cost of the underground portion, and that's roughly three quarters of a million. So when you start talking about, uh, underlying utilities, the clay pipe that sits underneath the roadway, maybe, uh, an inadequate water main that has to be upgraded, uh, same with gas line, uh, stormwater collection, conveyance and treatment, none of which really exist today, those costs add up tremendously. We are at a place now where we're able to to leverage our our revenues and issue bonds. The the good thing about the CRA is that once that money hits the redevelopment trust fund, it's no longer considered tax revenue. It's considered increment revenue. And while that while that distinction is important, if it were still considered tax revenue, we wouldn't be able to do the things that we do today. Grants, things of that nature. But most importantly, I think, is our ability to issue bonds. On that same ad valorem that was collected by the city, once it's deposited in a redevelopment trust fund, we can bond that revenue. In order to bond that revenue or to borrow against our debt, we have to have positive cash flow ratios. We're at a favorable place now, uh, to consider maybe borrowing half a million, up to five million, uh, maybe even more. But if our numbers and our revenue projections aren't favorable of that, then we miss out on those ratios and we have to wait even longer to get these projects across the finish line. What I can tell you is that we are here to help the city in any way that we can. We have great latitude with our infrastructure improvements that we can do. There are some statute, uh, statutory prohibitions in there that, you know, make it difficult. But that doesn't mean they can't be done, uh, without the, you know, taxing authorities, uh, approval. So we have an opportunity to work together to determine some of those areas where, uh, the city may have struggled in the past. While we can leverage not only our bonding, but we can also leverage the amount of of ad valorem coming in from the county that would have otherwise stayed, uh, with the county. So I my my point being, we're here to work with the city in any way that we can. I think there are a number of needs that have been identified. There are a number of projects that we've identified through our redevelopment plan. So my ask would be to consider continuing to fund us at ninety five percent and allow us to do the things that I believe the council created us to do.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I had asked first.
All right, go ahead.
So I I hear infrastructure being brought up repeatedly in these conversations. And it is it is my firm belief that if we want to have a a honest and frank conversation about infrastructure, the conversations we've had in the past, in the past couple of months about our our transfers from our enterprise funds into the general fund, that is, that is the first order of business in addressing our infrastructure needs because right now we are taking money from those funds where we could spend money on clay pipes and new wells and all of that sort of stuff. And we're putting it into the general fund to fund the general fund. Why is that? Because over the years, when someone asks for a five percent raise, when disposition need to be created, when we needed this over here, the council just said yes.
Poor management.
The council just said yes. And so the CRA is a mechanism, if you if you want to, if you want to look at it this way, it's an austerity mechanism. Because basically, as of twenty nineteen, that was the funding level we would get from henceforth with five percent increases year over year. And what we've always done, and this this even predates twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, they've made transfers from the enterprise funds to the general fund to make it balanced. So if we're if we're truly as a council worried about infrastructure upgrades, then we have to start there and address those issues of of making those transfers because once we stop those transfers, we then have money in those funds to do exactly what he just outlined, which is go borrow a bond and to address all of our clay pipes or to build a new well or whatever the case may be. But we're not doing that. We're we're taking the easy way out and going, well, we really need that in the general fund because we don't want to lay off people and we don't want to say no to this and we don't want to say no to that. So we're just going to take it back from the CRA. That that's the way I see it. That that is the way I see it. If we really and truly want to be serious about infrastructure, we've got to stop the transfers and we can't keep Robin Peter to pay Paul and then turn around and stop the transfers and go, well, CRA, give me that money back because I don't want to make the cuts in the general fund that we need, we truly need to make. That that's just the way I see it.
I'm going to call it what it is, Josh. I appreciate everything you're doing, but the CRA, when it was created, it was just a reallocation. It took that ad valorem tax dollars from us and gave it to the CRA organization, which then reclassified what could be done, which is borrowing on that money. We can't borrow on that on ad valorem tax dollars, but you can because it's not considered ad valorem tax dollars when it comes to you. So you're right, you can do much more with that money than we could. But it was, let's call it what it is. It was certainly took it out of our control, created a whole nother entity with a whole nother board that now has control over what the citizens are taking out of their pocket to put, you know, uh, to pay the tax. So let me ask you a question. What is the top three priorities that your board has? What top three projects are they on target to complete within the next, uh, twelve months?
I believe those three I just mentioned, the amphitheater, uh, the twenty seven Crescent Drive redesign and the alleyway improvement project.
Can we go back to this conversation then? Let's start with the the amphitheater.
Sure.
I'm just curious. Is it just the design? When 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 I say project, I'm thinking start to finish so that it's taken from its current condition to a pristine, like, brand new, this was the concept that it was. But yet, like you and I, what I shared with everybody, how can that be? I don't want to see y'all pour four million dollars into a project and we don't even have an estimated cost, for example, for that. So I I'm just curious, reasonably speaking, with what the funding sources that you have and the priorities that your board has put place forward versus what we're needing assistance with, which to me is the fire department, is the, you know, uh, some other things. Could you help me out with that, please?
Sure. I mean, I I think most of these projects. I mean, I think most of these projects that I discussed, specifically the amphitheater, we did receive a very high level probable cost. Again, pie in the sky, worst case scenario, this is what the planning consultant thought that that was going to cost us or cost the community to construct. One of the exercises that we're going through now with our architect is defining what that looks like. What does the community want? Even more importantly is what will the community be able to benefit from if we do redevelop that to a certain parameter? What are we missing out on today that we could gain tomorrow through the redevelopment of this amphitheater? So it's more than just identifying what it's going to look like, it's how's it going to be used? By whom? Things of that nature, so that we can then get to a concept that makes sense for the community. Unfortunately, all of those improvements require a lot of money and they take a lot of time. And for me, with my experience, I can tell you that, you know, three years, four years, Commissioner Glawell can attest to this all day long, they take a long time from concept or from idea to ribbon cutting. That's what we all want to do. We want to go cut the ribbons, right? So that we, as a community, can benefit from this. And I think the overall goal is to elevate this community, to increase ad valorem taxes so that we can benefit during our tenure, but also the city continue to benefit from that. And I think it's through some of these improvement projects that we have, we'll go a long way in doing just that. It's the rising tide theory, all boats lift together. And I think that's certainly where we have to look at this. There are some opportunities that exist, some opportunities that, quite frankly, are outside of the box, so to speak. Don't mean we can't do them, but certainly conversations we can have. In the end, we have the projects we've identified, certainly more opportunities that are out there, some of which we've identified, some of which we haven't. But that's kind of the long answer to your question.
I appreciate.
Yes, ma'am.
Your input. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So Josh, before you leave, the alleyway project you said could approach $4 million, but you know, if it's less, great. If you bond, you're going to have to bond that out.
For sure.
All right. So what would the term, how long would that bond be for typically?
Through the end of our time certain for completion. We can't exceed that. So 2033, September 30th of 2033 would be the last payment that we could possibly make on any debt service that we take out.
And amphitheater would be the same deal.
That's exactly right.
Right? Of course, you would be looking for other funding for that as well.
Perhaps. You know, and that's a lot of the concern that I think we have moving forward on this is, you know, we're lessening the amount of time or reducing the amount of time that we have to do these projects. And so if we don't look at borrowing or issuing some kind of debt, then we have to wait. Well, the longer we wait, the closer we get to that time certain for completion. So our likelihood of carrying a large project across the finish line, well, it diminishes.
Right.
So having these projects, having a group of projects identified with some generic cost to allow the board to consider a debt issuance would mean that we accelerate when we can do these, when we can finish these projects. We don't have to hope. We know based on cash flow calculations and we know on our debt service payments what the amount of money is that we can afford to borrow and how it's going to be repaid.
So time is of the essence to get these projects started.
Definitely.
And that's my point earlier, like, it's time, you know, we've got to do, we've got to have some movement and move forward. Yes, sir.
You want me to answer that?
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Look, counsel, we're having a discussion here at the dais. We need to continue this discussion at the dais.
I can get back to that.
Okay. Before you leave the podium, when you said originally that it would be a pot, $1 billion to do the alley project.
That was for the undergrounding of the Arrow Utilities.
Underground. Okay. Have you locked that in so we don't have to pay inflation?
We will not lock that in until we issue a contract to a contractor.
So what's out there?
It's being designed as we speak.
All right. So now, thank you.
Yes, sir.
A comment to you, Todd. This is a seven-year plan so that we can quit taking transfers, and that means taking money out of the water and sewer that we've been doing for a long time, and that's why our infrastructure is the way it is. Kobe's got a three-year plan to reduce transfers to all enterprise funds down to 10%. So he's got that.
And if we go another two years, we can get it to zero.
Okay. Well, water and sewage has always paid the bills. We've probably taken as much as, what do you think the most we've ever taken out?
As a collective whole?
Yes.
I would assume this year.
This year.
Which is $2.8 million. That's a combination of water, sewer, gas.
Okay. And you can reduce that down to 10% in three years.
That's the goal in the plan I presented.
All right. So, and to be clear, anytime the public hears the word transfer fees, that means they're robbing the water and sewer money, the infrastructure money to pay for other projects. So I'm kind of hardcore on this infrastructure because it's been kicked down the road so many times. And the bottom line on all this money going to the CRA, we don't have control of that anymore. We can suggest, and we can have a good working relationship with, but the people of Dufuniac Springs can't really say what's going on.
Oh, I disagree with that. There's every one of those that's citizens of Dufuniac Springs sitting out there.
Okay. So there's the alley and there's the amphitheater. And then what's the third one? What's the third one?
It's the redesign of 27 Crescent Drive for a potential art center.
All the focus is right here in this little area. The city of Dufuniac Springs is a lot bigger than that, and that's where most of our problems are. They've been overlooked for a long time.
Can I ask another question of Josh? I'm curious. Let's say you get the opportunity, whatever happens here today, and you go out and you borrow against future revenues. Are they only going to let you go seven years or are they going to let you go longer than that and then we accumulate the debt that's remaining?
Only to our time certain for completion date, which is September 30th, 2033. We cannot exceed that.
Okay.
That will be the absolute cap.
Seven years. That is a long time for our citizens to wait on, but they should have had a long time ago.
No, sir, but I would just like to say that the CRA covers, I actually attended some of the meetings when they were forming the CRA, and I actually remember Dr. McKnight discussing the various ways to cover the CRA and cover the city. And the way they got to where it is today is we excluded all of the swamp out of the city that got us to the threshold for what we could cover. So that's why the CRA covers the entire city. Typical CRAs don't cover the entire city. Typical CRAs only cover small portions, they redevelop that, and then they move to the next portion, and then they focus on that portion, and they redevelop that, et cetera. We're unique in that we've covered basically the entirety of the city with basically a few exceptions, mainly the swampland. And so the benefits of the CRA benefit everybody. Josh, I think you could stand here before us and tell us that you've done stuff that's not located just on Baldwin Avenue or its alleyway.
Absolutely.
So you have helped people improve their property, which has improved our ad valorem taxes all throughout the city, right?
Absolutely. That's actually illustrated in the map in our annual report that's available on our website. Go ahead, Amy.
Can I make a motion to reduce the CRA funding from 95% to 50%?
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Questions, comments, any more questions coming?
Comment. This is why I asked about a special meeting earlier. We don't have all five councilmen here tonight. So if this vote were to end in a tie right now, what happens, Clay?
Stays the exact same for the next funding year.
I'm sorry?
If the motion ends in a tie. If the motion ends in a tie, the status quo is preserved. And therefore, since there's not going to be another council meeting between now and August 4th, the funding will say.
A special meeting?
I'll tell the council, the goal is to have a special meeting. You need to go and have a special meeting. You don't need to vote on it tonight. You now have a motion on the floor. So if you wish to withdraw that motion and schedule a special meeting, that's well within the purview of the council. But I think the point of going to a vote tonight, only to turn around and try to vote again in three days defeats the purpose of calling into a vote this evening. Well, I'd suggest at least this, either withdraw the motion or at least wait till Mr. Scogner gets here in about eight or 10 minutes.
Well, I would say he hasn't been here for this discussion. Right now, he would be here in a special meeting, but, you know.
Well, I'm available for a special meeting.
I'm okay with.
I'm with us. I can do a special meeting too.
I'm okay with going ahead and vote if you want to vote. Let's vote.
I think we could do both.
I just wanted to know the status.
A 2-2 vote means the funding will stay in effect for the next fiscal year.
Is he on his way, Mayor? Is that what you're?
That's what I've been told.
I'll second that motion.
There's already a motion.
I'm sorry, sir.
So we have a motion and a second.
So if this passes, if we vote yea.
The funding is cut to the 50% of the increase year over year. The county will go down to that level, and that's where it will remain set until we go back through the reprocessing of it in the future. There is no going back up automatically.
So voting yea is going to reduce.
Voting yes.
From 95% of the ad valorem increase to 50%. I'm for that.
Clay, could you please repeat what you said about it can't go back up? So next, in the next budget cycle.
The council would have to go through the full process of notifying the county of its intent to levy an additional increase. You'd have to give them adequate notice. We'd start 90 days in advance at that point to get the 60-day meetings. They would have to consent to whatever those amounts are, and we'd have to go through a more lengthy process to go back up.
So we would just have to start earlier if we wanted to go back up? But if we wanted to keep it.
And you would have to get the county's permission.
But if we wanted to keep it at 50%, that nothing else would have to be done. Is that correct?
Just like today, you don't have to do anything if you don't want to change it. Maybe y'all can change to 50%. Go ahead.
There's a motion on the.
I have to agree.
You have to have public comment, Mayor.
I have to agree with Mr. Birham and his rationale. And one question that I'm sorry I blurted out to ask was, if you decrease the percentage and they won't get bonds, are they going to be able to meet it with that, you know, their payments and everything with the decreased percentage?
Yeah, Josh can answer that. I mean, I know we've met with financial advisors of the city on this issue.
It certainly reduces the amount that we can borrow and the amount available to us throughout the remainder of our time certain for completion. So just for easy math, it's a difference of about $10 million.
So Josh, tell us, what are your future? What's the amount that you're wanting to borrow for the next seven years?
Well, I think it's dependent upon, you know, what projects we move forward, which ones we've identified, which ones we have not. I can tell you that based on our redevelopment plan, we have in excess of $20 million in projects that are allocated by our planning consultant that our $10 were projected for.
Are any of those what the council wants you to help the city with now? Or would that have to be reevaluated by your board? Then because we're going to try to shift your focus.
So we have a redevelopment plan that is somewhat of our guardrails. We identified a number of capital improvement projects in that redevelopment plan update, some of which the council has prioritized, some of which were not prioritized. So I think the answer to that is, you know, there are some of those funds that have already been allocated and some that are remaining for us to figure out, well, what's the better way of using it.
So for instance, the council cannot, the CRA cannot do anything that is on your city Dufuniac Capital Improvement Plan until it has been off the CIP for a period of three years. When that was brought to the council's attention, Mr. Urban started going through his redesign, the council did reallocate some of its CIP so that the CRA could step into some of those. And those are now in the plan.
If it's left at 95%, how much can you borrow? What is the goal? I mean.
Yeah, so I think it looks like we would be able to borrow, no problem, $5 million with the potential of $5 million more out of 2027 debt issuance. So that's a total of $10 million, which is roughly half of the $20 million and such that we have projected for the remainder of our time certain for completion.
So you would borrow $10 million, but you'd have to pay it back within seven years of borrowing it.
That's correct.
It would all be paid back within that time period.
Yeah, that's the calculation PFM was given.
One of the areas that the bank in particular wants to see with debt issuance is, you know, at least a 2X, two times cash flow ratio. So at $10 million, that would get us pretty close to that. So any adjustment up or down will affect that ratio. So right now, we're in a favorable position, at least according to our financial consultant, to really consider this. Hasn't gone before my board. The majority of them are here tonight, so they're hearing it. But those are conversations we've been having. Those are conversations that are certainly going to be brought up at our next meeting about what that looks like for us. But it's hard to have those conversations without knowing exactly what our funding is going to be.
Thank you. This is a very difficult conversation, and I appreciate everybody's input, even if we're on different sides of the fence. I just.
And if I may say.
I appreciate your board and what you guys are doing.
You're in a tough spot, and I certainly would not want to be in your spot. We have opportunities that I think the city can benefit from, but at the same time, I recognize the bottom line numbers. And so I just want you to know that we want to help the city the best we can. We're certainly sensitive to your concerns and your needs. At the same time, you know, we would like to continue to do the things that, you know, you all created us to do.
I have just come on to get Josh's update, which is, Mr. Coast has made a motion.
Mayor, before he leaves the podium, may I ask him a question?
Certainly.
So you've got three projects, the alley, the amphitheater, and crescent. And do you feel confident that $5 million will take care of those three projects?
I do not. I think it would be in excess of that.
Okay. So you're asking, what kind of, how much money do you plan on borrowing?
That's a to-be-determined amount. I think in our conversations, we were looking at that amount that we could borrow realistically, and that number was a $5 million issuance in '26, and then maybe another $5 million issuance in '27. So for a total of $10 million. But it's up to the board to decide, A, if they want to pursue that, and B, that amount that they feel comfortable with.
Okay. So $10 million is going into a small area. Can you tell me approximately, and I'm not going to hold you to an exact figure, just approximately, how much money has been spent to help the rest of the city?
I don't know that number off the top of my head. I can tell you that our growth and development assistance program in aggregate has seen somewhere around a quarter of a million that's been scattered all over this community, some east, some west, some north, some south, across both residential and commercial properties. So a good bit. Never mind some of the, you know, other in-kind kind of things that we've done as well.
Do you see a imbalance there?
I do not, honestly.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right. Mr. Coast has made a motion. On the, you know, right now, we're taking 95% of our ad valorem to the CRA, which also county puts in as well, and he wants to reduce it to 50. Was there anything else to that?
No, sir. They have the CRA continue with business as usual, but use, the maximum the Florida statute allows is 95%. The minimum is 50.
And I want to apologize to everyone. I was on my way back from Nashville and watching the meeting here at the last part. I was just trying to catch up as I was coming in.
All right. So we've, have we got a second motion?
Do you have a motion or a second?
I made a motion and a second.
Mayor, to clarify, was the motion made by Councilwoman Hevlin, seconded by Councilman Coast?
Okay. All right. No, I'm sorry. Okay. All right. All right. One more comment. Come on.
Well, I don't know that we have more than one, Mayor. We probably need to give a public chance beyond just one.
May I clarify that motion for Josh?
My name is Rob Hamilton. I'm actually on the board for the CRA, appointed by Amy. I had this whole thing written out, but I'm a straight shooter and I don't like filters. So I think it'd be very short-sighted to cut this down to 50%. So I think it'd be very short-sighted to cut this down to 50%. Um, I would much rather see us work together. And I said it at when we had the joint meeting, I will meet with you anytime, anywhere you want. If you have concerns or things you want addressed, and I will bring it back to the board. Uh, I can tell you, I already have planned, not for this meeting, for the next meeting, to bring, um, being able to help the fire department and redo their building. Because there are ways for us to do that. We have to get things signed off by other taxing authorities. And I don't see that being a problem. But that's something that I, you know, I was an EMT at one point, I get it, I've talked to Chief Sheffield about it, I love law enforcement. But there's so much we can do with that money, and I think cutting that down and therefore losing the contribution from the county is going to really limit it. You know, Josh kind of touched on it. No, we can't pay for everything we have planned right now if you cut it down to 50%. You're going to lose a lot. And I don't think it's unbalanced, and the reason for that is, um, you know, Baldwin is an epicenter, right? This is where we want our tourists to come to, we have the farmer's market, we have uh the Christmas stuff, the Halloween happenings, everything happens at the Lakeyard. So yes, a lot of money is going to the Lakeyard because we're trying to get more people to come. Uh, but again, short answer, I really think we need to work together. I think there's a lot of projects that you guys want to get done that we can get done. But you have to tell us what you want. I can't read your mind. I'm good at a lot of things, but I definitely can't read your mind.
I want to modify my motion.
Okay.
Instead of uh having the conversation to reduce it today, I'd like to uh ask that we have a special meeting so that we can discuss just this one issue before Monday. Got to be before Monday.
For a second, willing to modify.
Yes, sir.
All right, so I think it might be a good idea.
What day are we talking, Thursday?
We better do it now.
Do you have a budget or a chart Thursday already?
No.
Friday's going to be.
Um, we could do Thursday, the 31st.
Four o'clock.
We can do any day, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday. That special meeting requires six-hour notice, but we're all here, so I think this is.
This is sufficient.
So any afternoon this week.
All right, I'll make myself available for.
Airport, airport is Friday, so we can't do it then. We need to do it before that.
Were you going to be there?
That's a modified motion and a second, so any questions?
So now it's to have a special meeting?
Thursday at four is the block.
Since y'all are going to a meeting, I'm going to change my statement a little bit. Um, I have a problem with the CRA and some of the funding that's going on because I see three signs at Lakeyard recently from those homeowners. This was originally started, and then correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor, but this was started for blight property. Now it's going to friends and family. Yes, I don't see a lot of blight property, I don't see the signs at blight property. That is one of the things I have an issue with. Now, what I am in favor of is if we can structure something that ties Josh's hands a little bit, and we are using this money for the police department, the fire department, the alleyways, the amphitheater, more so that it benefits everybody in the community, I'm for that, but I'm not for the friends and family benefit of the CRA.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Josh.
If I may clarify, Ms. Kitch's comments, you know, our grant program is structured in a way that it will fund improvements to exterior of a home or the parcel itself, so long as those improvements can be seen from a public road. And the intent is to elevate the property and to increase the tax value of that property. So it's not just for blighted. If you go back and look in the original founding document, you'll see a memo from the city manager that outlines that the core goal is to address current blight, and probably more importantly, to prevent future blight. And that's certainly the goal with the site and building improvement grant, is to make this area more attractive. It's not income-based, it's just a function of exterior improvements to a home regardless of income. We do have income, excuse me, income-based grant programs, but the residential and the commercial site and building improvement grants are open to anyone and everyone willing to participate, so long as those conditions are met.
Mr. Mayor. Yes, ma'am. Go ahead, Josh.
So I think that's a great segue into some of our subsequent uh agenda items tonight. If it wasn't for the CRA funding, we would not have these agenda items to be presented to the council. The code review and land use committee has worked hard to come up with abatement procedures to address future blight. And it is literally the perfect marriage of that with the CRA funding that will help mitigate that future blight. We can then institute these abatement procedures, which would then keep this city from putting liens on people's houses that total hundreds of thousands of dollars, and we never see any resolution. So here's a real application of the CRA funding that will have direct benefit for all involved. So if you have a code violation, if we adopt these that are further down the list here, you will then, you could potentially be abated and then have that instead of a $100,000-plus lien, because we have that with some of these properties right now. The big stores are a classic example of that, where the big store was accruing fees and it's well in excess of $100,000. It's well beyond the value of that building at this point because it's so dilapidated. And yet, here's an option that we could take, that we could seize the moment tonight and say, we're going to be proactive about this, and we're going to take care of these things before they become a big, big problem. It's like taking to medicine now versus having to go to the doctor and see a surgeon.
Yes, ma'am.
Um.
State your name again, just so he can make sure.
Randy Lightner, L-I-G-H-T-N-E-R. I'm kind of like Ms. Kitch, it goes back and forth, I'm switching up what I want to say, but um basically, at 95% of all increased property tax, that leaves the city with 5% increase, the city is stagnant for at least the next eight years. No one can get raises, you can't hire anyone else, that's the way I understand it. I only know nurse math. But, I mean, if you're only getting 5% of any increase, then you're not growing, right? You're, it's the same amount of money, you're not even going to have money for a cost of living increase. I do like what Mr. Hamilton said about the possibility of doing something with the fire department, everyone knows that's what got me here. But it is just talk right now, so I've heard a lot of, and again, no, I understand it takes time to do things, I'm not bashing Mr. Irving at all, he seems like a wonderful person. But I've heard a lot of talk about design, architect, what's this going to look like, what's that going to look like? We've got a study on this, we've got a study on that. And now we've got a general idea, even though we don't know what it looks like, but we do know we need to borrow $5 million this year, and we need to borrow $5 million next year. So I'm lost. I'm very confused, but Mr. Birbaum saying that the CRA ties the council's hands, I think that decreasing it back to 50% ties the CRA's hands to where we're doing, everyone's doing things more responsibly, and everyone's checking each other. I just don't understand at this point in time respectfully how any rational, responsible decision other than to cut the CRA back to 50% can possibly be made right now. The city's got too many other things that they need to have done. I mean, of course, the fire department, but you've got sewer problems, you've got water problems, and you are going to be basically stagnant for eight years unless there's some new-fangled math that I'm not aware of. You can't progress for as long as the CRA is existent, so I think it's a fair trade-off to cut it back to 50%. You're losing a little bit from the county, but so what? You have to stretch it out over a little more time, it may take a little longer to do the things, but everything can get done. You don't have to go into debt $10 million for it, Lord, I hope. Um, yeah, I'm confused about all the changes that have come about, so I'll just end it there. Thank you.
Are y'all going to have a special meeting? If you're going to have a special meeting and I don't want to talk, I want to come to that meeting.
Well, maybe you can come up here and tell me you all have a special meeting.
Okay, I was here when the CRA started, Sharon Grenade. I was here when they had all the meetings, and there were a lot of meetings about whether we were going to have it or not. It sounded like a really good idea. I haven't heard anybody say anything that CRA's done that they didn't like. The CRA is not a foreign entity that's come into our community and that y'all have nothing to say about. They had something to say about it from the very beginning, the city council was involved in it. So I resent the part where it's acting like you've got some foreigners coming in and telling us how to do it. There are people that live here that care about the community. And just like I said, I'm still upset about the bathrooms. I want a public restroom on the Lakeyard, and we've been talking about that. Robert Nelson worked so hard, and he passed away, and still nothing's being done. I want to start seeing a city council that does something. So if you have a meeting and you can all have a discussion rather than at this time because you can't talk to one another, seems like that's the best way to go, and I'll be here with you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have a question for. Go ahead, Kirby. Um, is there any extra, how quick does it take you guys to get ready for that submittal of the TIF form?
I believe Danielle's already ready.
Plug in a number.
You tell us Thursday, you've done it's good.
Yeah.
Oh, are you asking about the map or the percentage?
No. What has to be submitted on the 4th? So a special meeting would not put a type of crunch on you guys?
The forms are already about 95% filled out.
Yeah.
Love to be proper.
It's a multiplier, you just add in the number and run the 4th. All right, you had a motion about the special meeting.
What day, what day do we agree? Thursday, at what time?
Just 4:00 is fine, if that works for everyone.
Thursday at 4:00.
Is that good with everybody?
It's good with me.
So I add that to my motion, Thursday at 4:00.
All in favor, Sam?
Aye.
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 I was curious.
Mr. Ali will get that out in the morning.
We're going to take a little break, uh, probably about seven or eight minutes, and we'll get back to you.
Setting parameters in which we work within when we do abatements. In no way does this policy require the city to do abatements. It's just there as a guideline to that code ordinances. So regardless of what we do with number six, we would staff recommends we approve the property abatement parameters procedures policy.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and second and questions, comments, anyone? All in favor say aye.
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 As Kerry, thank you very much. You say we're gonna.
I'll make a motion to continue items six and eight.
Second.
All right, I'm gonna motion and second. Any question, comment, anyone? All in favor say aye.
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 All right, now we're moving to seven.
Mayor, a quick note on both of these, once approved, staff will make all the applicable changes from plane department to community development department. So scribners change, which they've already done, but I failed to get it on here. So we'll make those changes. This mayor is the lien reduction policy. This is simply a way to formalize a process in which individuals, property owners with liens on the property from city code violations, have a way and a path to reduce those. So they can show the city progress toward that property and cost invested in it. It lays that out into a process. And again, it's generated out of the code review and land use committee. Staff create a flow chart in which, you know, they work through and the individual can see as well. And so it takes you through that process and the criteria required. There is a $200 non-refundable application fee for individuals to apply for this because they are applying for relief from violations. And so again, it's formalizing it, it's taking what we've been doing in best practice and it's putting in policy. So we ask for approval of the lien reduction policy.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and second, any questions, comments from anyone? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right, as Kerry, thank you very much. Now we're gonna go to D with Mr. Wallace. Four, four D, one. Bay Springs.
All right, good evening.
Evening.
So what I have tonight is the infrastructure acceptance and development order issuance for Bay Springs Phase One. As you can see, this is a project that was initiated back in 2022. So we've been waiting a long time. There are approximately 125 lots there, I believe. All of the infrastructure has been installed. It's been inspected by city staff. It's been inspected by our engineers. So what I would ask for tonight is that the city council accept the infrastructure for Bay Springs Phase One and approve me to issue a development order for the construction of the actual homes.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion.
I'll second for discussion.
Now, second, all right, go ahead, Tom.
Chris, can you confirm to me, this has kind of come up in the past. As a matter of fact, it came up very vividly, at least for me, back when we were looking at potentially accepting the roads right there around Chick-fil-A. And there was a question about those roads and testing of those roads and how do you, what's that process that's in our code for how do you get those roads accepted, et cetera? So can you confirm for me that they followed on this, that they followed what the procedures that are in our code, which if I recall from that discussion was that there's, there has to be independent testing at two different points in the construction phase of those roads to verify that the base is correct and that the asphalt's correct. So that when we accept them, we're accepting a road that's up to our standards. Can you elaborate on that for me, please?
Yeah, and what I've got here, this is done by a third party. It is signed and sealed by an engineer. They took core samples throughout the project. Those samples are at a depth where it tests not only the base, but the actual thickness of the asphalt. And the engineer had certified that all of the results have came back in compliance. So there were tests done along the way and the final results show you basically a, you know, a foot long tube of base asphalt. Then we get a thickness report, so.
Okay, and then to, I guess, to kind of take that step one step further. Kobe, I know I'd had this discussion with you, but I kind of want to do it here in public as well. And that is, when it comes to the lift station, the sewer pipes, the water pipes, has all of that been inspected to our, our standards by our staff and engineers as appropriate?
Yes, I would.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay.
They're required to not only get approval from staff, but from D E P. And we have been there every step along the way, especially with the lift station.
There's a lift station.
Yes, there is.
And they built it to our standards.
They did.
Without any problems.
Yeah, it's amazing when you.
That's a miracle.
The years will never cease.
Anyone else?
Is that what they call the tech specs?
To the tech manual, they built it to the tech manual.
To the current tech manual, too.
Yeah.
Not the old one.
Anyone else?
It actually looks really nice out there. You know, when I looked at the map, the detachments, you know, I thought, oh, I bet they called three feet of dirt in, but they did not have to do that out there. And it looks really nice, the streets look nice.
Yeah, it does. And I might add that they, before I was able to, or after I entered this agenda item into the system, they provided us with a check for the warranty and the maintenance bonds. We have that in hand now.
Since that came before, way before some of our times.
Well, in this phase, there's 125, I believe. And then in total, between the four phases plus the townhomes, you're gonna have a little 475 to 500 total.
Right. Real, real quick, I'm sorry. Let me, let me see if I can find it real quick. We're, we're accepting these roads, but then in here it states that they're going to be maintaining them. Yeah, they're, they're gonna be maintaining them. So how does that work if we're accepting them, but then we're allowing?
We're accepting the public dedication, but we are not accepting the maintenance obligation.
Okay.
Great, Mr. Wallace?
Cause.
That, that would be correct for the first year, but after that first year is up.
They have to come back and ask us to accept the maintenance.
Yeah, we'll do a final inspection.
Yeah, you're accepting the public dedication at this time on the final plan. And then they have to maintain, there'll be a final inspection. At that point in time, if it doesn't meet our standards, you should choose to decline. They stay privately maintained, but publicly dedicated.
Okay.
Dedication to the public and maintenance are two different things always.
It's man.
Is the infrastructure for the whole, for the whole thing or just the 125?
No, just for phase one and then they'll just keep adding on to that. Yep, so that'll come back before the council when that is ready to go.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? All right, have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
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 As Kerry, is that all you needed?
Yep, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, this time we'll go to Kyle in the room?
I didn't see.
He is not, but I'm, I'm prepared to take it, fellas.
All right, well, go for it.
I can talk to Kyle, I'll try my best.
I have a question for him.
One second, get loaded up here. He called me today, he had a family emergency, so he couldn't be here. So mayor, between the months of May and June, the city is 100% compliant with both water and wastewater permits. We are, we pumped in the month, on average, between April and June, 42.28 million gallons of water. At our treatment plant for wastewater, we are, for the month of May, we were at 45%, so 670,000 gallons. When you see the chart, I talked to Kyle, next month he's gonna start at, or next time he'll add percentages because the .67 represents 670,000 gallons, not 67%. So he'll add percentages next time. So we're currently at 45%. The fan press for biosolids is expected to be here in September, hopefully. He will be working with Randall on closing the pole barn to make sure that piece of equipment is well maintained and functions properly. Skada, waiting on the equipment to come in for the contractor and we will be having staff trained on that in August for both water and wastewater skada. To this spills, May 1st, there was spilled at lift station 36 and 15,000 gallons. That was the result of a water meter blowing up. I can share that photo, it literally blew up, so. Yeah, the power meter, sorry, sorry, not water meter, power meter. It blew up, so they're, they're getting that fixed. Spill at lift station 17 of 2,500 gallons. I do not have any information on that, do, do y'all have anything on that?
Skylar Martin Jacobs. Yes, that lift station is currently offline technically, sort of in a way. Cause this is also connected to lift station 42. We worked with Mike Hargrove and the city guys about that. We're trying to develop a plan about course of action with that lift station because some of the components in that lift station are pretty old and there's a lot of electrical issues. And a lot of us, you know, so we're just trying to figure it out, but we, it, I think the, the rain, that it was lightening a lot that weekend and the power went out to that lift station and it caused a slight spill. So we responded accordingly, put a bypass pump over there and then also rerouted the line to fill into lift station 42, which is the new Veterans Lodge lift station.
Appreciate it, thank you. Yeah, 17 is behind West Western, 42 is the master pump station that put in on the, on Eagles Crossing. So they're finding a way to divert the flows from 17 to 42 because 42 can well handle it, so. June 2nd, the effluent line broke. We talked about that previously, staff found that, Jacobs worked with Jacobs. There was a spill, but I believe the majority of that, very high percentage of that, almost 99%, close to it was recovered. Staff was pretty proactive in guiding that down a certain ditches and getting the pump trunks there to haul it all out. Section two projects completed, you can read through that. Under repairs and replacement, a lot of these things have already been identified and prioritized by Kyle. Him and I worked together on that. So what I, under Councilman Bearbaum and I talked about, I'll get with Kyle and start coming maybe distinguishing between old and new. So a lot of these things have priorities, we're working on a funding plan either this fiscal year or next. So we will be bringing that back. And then, and then lastly, what you see in number five, the rebateables account, currently they're at 104,298 in wastewater and 14,142 in water. We budgeted 200,000 for wastewater, so we still have roughly $95,000 left in that account. And then for water, we budgeted 75,000. So again, that's through June, we haven't received for July just yet, but that's what we currently stand.
So while we're kind of on this, this particular topic, especially when it comes to wastewater, I wanted to bring up to the council, I've mentioned this to Kobe. I would like the council, and I can put it on the next agenda if amenable to it. I would like for the council to direct Kobe to reinvestigate a proposal that was given to the city years ago about a septic receivage station. And what, a septic receiving station? And so that would allow us to take when someone's septic tank is pumped out, we can actually receive that because right now they're traveling over an hour from here to do that. Now, when this proposal originally came up, I think it was back in 2020, 2021, the, the income numbers from that would have paid the debt service on the new plant, $80 million. It would have paid the debt service on that plant. That's how much potential there is for septic receivage because right here where we are, there's nobody that receives it. So they, when they, their truck fills up, they're an hour and a half one way to go empty that truck to the, back in the area to service the next customer. And, and when it was presented originally and then it's kind of sort of floated back up and people have made comments to me recently that kind of brought it back to my attention. If we will do that, that will be a massive revenue stream for us and that's utilizing our existing equipment. If I, I found the proposal and actually forwarded it to, to Kobe, but it would actually be set up out there at the airport at that lift station that's out there because what they have to do is they have to ingest it far enough away from the plant for it to get diluted over ti, over, over time. And so there would be some initial upfront investment. If I remember correctly, it was on the order of like 200 or 250,000 dollars. Now that was pre-COVID and pre-inflation. But the return on the revenue from it, it would have been paid for in less than five years. And then after that, that's just pure.
How much, how, how many trips is that or how many?
It was hundreds of thousands of gallons that we would be able to receive and charge them for.
Yeah, but per day or what? I mean, to pay, to 80 million, it just, the math doesn't.
It was a, it was a lot.
The math isn't.
It would cover the debt service on the 80 million dollar issuance, which was projected to be 50% of the 80 million.
Right, right.
About a $40 million debt service.
I'd be all for looking at something like that, but I certainly want to see what kind of proposal they put to. Can you find that old one, Kobe?
I've forwarded it to.
Okay, so send it around to.
But it, it's, it's a revenue stream. And, and as we were looking through this agenda item, it reminded me, it's a potential revenue stream that we're, we're leaving on the table. And, and don't get me wrong, it might be very expensive now because that was many, many years ago. That was pre-COVID, pre-inflation, so it might not be attainable right now, but I think it's something we should look at.
I was just at a state park that I do volunteer four times, four months a year. And I can tell you that they had a problem and they had to have a truck come and they had to come on a Saturday and Sunday and they had to make seven trips and it's still what didn't correct the problem at the time. And it's very expensive, so it is a good revenue stream if.
The other thing is, we, I've had conversations with Kobe already. Even though we're at 45% today, just a few months ago, we were at 40% and we haven't taken on all the growth that's yet to come at this point. So there's going to be substantial increases in our capacity over time. And we've got to start looking at ways to fund either, or either expanding our existing plant, which is what I would propose that we look at at this point with that property or construction. And we don't need to wait until we get to the conversations that I was having when I first came on this council. About we're at 70% today, 80% today, 90, we don't know where we're at today. But those were very uncomfortable conversations and we could get heckled by the public over it or tarred and feathered really quick because of the fact that, how serious you took it or what lack of forethought either us or others had in the past. But I mean, now we've got good measurements, whereas we did not have that at that time. But we've got some growth coming and it may not be in seven years, it may not be in 10 years, but within the next 20 years, it's gonna be here.
So it's all.
I'm talking about that expansion, that expansion is gonna, you're gonna be required to expand within the next two decades.
No doubt about it. Go ahead.
How are we gonna pay for it?
That's what I'm talking about with, with what Councilman Beerbaum's talking about bringing back to us. That's one other revenue stream that we can leverage to put right back into this.
Well, it wasn't just equipment, it was, it was them setting up that, that lift station out there to be able to receive those trucks. So there was, there was, it wasn't just one single piece of equipment, it was a whole process to set that up, set that up as a station.
It would almost seem like a business plan that we would have to find streams to invest in that based on what we're trying to accomplish.
I think it was, it originally was proposed at like $200,000 and I think we were maybe gonna fund it out of some of the impact fees or some other, I don't know, I don't remember.
The suggestion was impact fees, that would have not have been a permissible use, however, capacity fees are a viable consideration.
Where's the physical location out at the airport of this lift station you're talking about? On that property, where is it physically located?
I've found this Jacobs back, I have to look at the year, I don't know the year now.
2021, that may be it.
This is, uh, looks like at the front of the park.
Yeah, I thought it was in the park.
In front of Jean Hurley, there's two, there's three alternatives. There's front of Jean Hurley and then two different alternatives at the existing plant.
So they, they talked about that and they, they recommended Jean Hurley because if you receive it directly at the plant, they have to do more processing of it before then it's put into the plant because it's, it's such high concentration. If you put it in out there at Jean Hurley, it's allowed to flow through the system and dilute down.
Over time and distance.
Yeah.
And will constant incoming trucks that are dumping there, will, is that gonna impact any of the aviation world?
No, it's outside the fence.
Not coming in?
Does right now.
No more than what?
The park.
Does right now, it's outside the fence.
But that's, that's, well, it's just one location, you know, we, we could say, hey, we want you to look at other locations.
We're fixing to have another entrance to the south.
So it doesn't have to be right exactly where our lift station is. It just has to be somewhere in the vicinity that just can flow to that lift station.
Ready sites.
Understood, thank you.
Yep.
Okay.
If that's something Council's made up to, we can just bring something back.
Please. It's just a, that's general direction.
Done? Okay, all right, then this time we will go to Josh. No, that's what we're already done. We'll go to citizens comments, this time if you have a comment, keep it three minutes or less. Recite your name and whatever organization you're with.
Michelle Kitch, just me.
Kitchen Incorporated?
Yeah, Kitchen Incorporated. I do have a question. It's come to light to me that the fire department does not bill for car accidents if they go and actually physically do something, but that is allowed on insurance. And I was wondering if that's a missed revenue we're missing out on, like when they do cleanups of gas or oil spills or that kind of thing. And my next question is, to help fund the fire department, could we consider an ambulance or two? Because I can tell you from the last bill of my father-in-law, ambulances are very pricey expense to head to the emergency room. So this is all in wanting to save our fire department? If we could look at some revenues like that or even if that's possible, I don't know. I've never done it, but I was told that by insurance, you can bill the insurance company for services.
I know they're quick to ask for insurance cards typically when people have those.
Do we bill for them?
We don't operate ambulances.
Yeah.
No, what about the fire, fire trucks?
Typically it's got up here, medic assistance or other assistance for EMT.
So is there, is there something in the, in insurance that the fire department can, for oil spills? Okay, all right, second, I'm a little unclear on the Veterans Memorial, I just want to make sure I understand this. All y'all voted on was the lake yard was a no.
That's correct.
And, and other words, they're gonna have to come back with something else if they want to put it on city property.
Yep.
New location, new design? That y'all didn't, you didn't have that in your motion?
Well, because the existing motion was for conceptual plan at that location, now that we've eliminated that location, they're gonna have to come back with new designs. And what those look like, that'll be a separate process.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Comment.
All right, we'll close the floor for public comment and we will go to, has he got anything, Clay?
No, sir.
All right, and legislative request, we got Mr. Harrison on a, I guess those emergency identification markers?
Correct. They, staff was nice enough to put this up there for us to see. Now, this was just an idea, there was an incident at the lake yard where responders had a little bit of trouble finding a person. And I don't know who responded first, but the person that made the call to 911 was evidently giving landmarks from the bottom sidewalk down at the, down at the water. Which from that person's perspective, being upset and, you know, what have you with, with the situation, may or may not have made sense to the dispatcher. So my understanding was there was a little bit of a delay to get to the person, person ended up being fine, what have you. But it, I, I got a text from Mr. at 10 o'clock that night and about it and said, well, can the city consider, you know, some type of system so that 911 can know exactly where someone's at in an emergency? Whether it's at night, which could typically be somebody walking, jogging, whatever, a festival or whatever. Just, just so it's a more rapid response. It doesn't involve water, swimming, heart attack, stroke, any of those kinds of things. Those, those are minute responses, right? They have to be very quick. So it made me think about this and I rode around the lake yard and, you know, all the, all the streets that entered the circle have a, have a pedestrian lamppost directly across on the inside sidewalk in, in the lake yard right there. So I thought, well, that'd be a good place to put some kind of identifier, whether it's a, whatever zone, 911 emergency response zone one or two or color code.
Just a letter A or color, they do it at beach accesses in the county.
Yeah, something like that.
The whole process.
So I just wanted to bring this up for, for us to think about, you know, doing. But now, now Chief has provided us all with a paper here, this what three words app. Now, I'm not familiar with this, so if you, you guys want to explain this, there, there is a way evidently to identify where someone is, but the dispatcher would have to send a text to that person. And I don't know if they have to download the app at that point in time or what, I mean, I don't know. I'm thinking emergencies, well, how does this work, Chief?
So yeah, it would give their, their coordinates to it, but the issue we had with this particular incident was the person calling 911 was on the opposite side of the lake and the directions they gave us was it's over by the star, which we were able to kind of figure out. But he ended up actually being, which probably in about 27, he was actually under the pier in Z5 or 25 or wherever Z5, I guess it is. So it took us a second and of course it's 9:30 at night and he's, you know, bobbing out there. But BS, with the noon, we are updating our 911 system currently, it should go in effect.
Within the next quarter.
Yeah.
It's about the end of the year, they should be moving pretty quick.
So, but yeah, there's all kinds, we're gonna be kind of all kinds of capabilities with that system that are gonna allow us to better do stuff, so. Said he hasn't swam in the lake since he was a kid and he used to swim across it. Why he chose that night to do that, it was last Tuesday night, fully clothed in jeans and tennis shoes. I'll let you know if he was crazy or not. But we did trespass him from the lake yard for violating city ordinances. He did not meet Baker Act criteria, never said he wanted to harm herself and all that. But yeah, he has been trespassed from Triply Park at this point.
Search for swimming after sunset.
So the city ordinance states that you can only swim in the designated swimming area during the time set by the council. So he was, yes. So definitely wasn't within y'all's timeframe at 9:30 at night, so.
So on your identification is a, with the numbers?
I think, I think it would be a good idea for, for that type of scenario. And then of course, as, as we grow and have more events, you know, 4th of July would be a great one, you know, something's, something's happening and we need to know exactly where they are and if we had some kind of.
More nationality on, because you know, somebody might look at the numbers and think that's a number on circle drive. If you use letters, it wouldn't be confusing.
Yeah, I think it would be.
Yeah, zone A, zone B.
Kind of like Disney parking, you know, you got the Josh Conyers parking there and Todd Beerbaum by there.
Would you do it at the top of the lake and at the bottom of the lake corresponding? Because there's a lot of distance between that area.
You should be visible when we, when the, we went through more of this than I ever care to, the TDC at the beach accesses. The short answer is there should be a sign that's visible for both angles. And so if it's not readily visible, line of sight from the lower part of the lake yard, you would need a second one down towards the bottom.
How would you do that at night?
It depends on if it's lit or otherwise.
Yeah, I, I think, I think probably making kind of like the newer street signs. If you just had an A that's already on the existing pole that was lit and the backside would be a B. Of course, they could look at and say, well, I'm in zone A. I think something like that would work, but that's, that's some of the, hate to kick a dead horse, but put the CRA on a project like that and tell them and I'll, I'll push it through too, and I think that's some stuff that they can find.
Sure.
Let natural selection take its course.
Then we gotta worry about liability insurance and.
Yeah, I mean. It, you know, it, it could be someone walking the top sidewalks, you know, at night, ladies or whatever that are feared for their safety, somebody's approaching them, that kind of thing. So it could work up top, it could work at the bottom. I don't know the nuts and bolts of it, I just wanted to bring it to, for us to think about.
On the bottom, would it be, especially if it was way down at the bottom, that'd really look tacky. You know, if you had signs down by the lake.
I think if you had them on the power poles already and it was kind of high and visible, you might, you know, I think there's all kinds of things you probably come up with.
I think the poster, great idea.
And, and most people wouldn't even notice them or know what they're for unless it said, but the dispatchers could be trying to say, hey, direct these, direct these upset people to look for the, for a sign or, or whatever.
Well, when they say we're, I'm by the dock, there's two docks and they're pretty good, you know, halfway across, so.
That's right.
By the church, oh yeah, I'm by the church, well, that's. By the church, oh yeah, I'm by the church, well, that's, if it is press there, you know, so AKM church.
If the council's okay with it, I'll, I, through me, Chief Sheffield, will work with the city marshal to bring back a solution to that. I know Code Divorce Officer Strong's provided some ideas as well, so if everybody's good with that, we'll, we'll work with city marshal and bring them back.
This might be a, a good time to, uh, maybe the PD needs a boat.
Oh, God.
They sell it at Walmart, they're orange and they have paddles.
Yellow board.
I'm gonna buy yellow, yellow board.
All right, Kobe, you got any more comments?
Just to Mayor, really quick, we did receive two bids for the Chautauqua Hall Brotherhood, second floor, so that'll be on our next agenda. James, he's gone. So you'll see those, you'll get to consider those, and the county, we just need the council to select one. If we receive any more between now and agenda deadline date, that'll be on there as well. But we did finally get two of those, and so that'll be up for consideration at the next meeting. And then lastly, library's coming along, should see the mayor having another update here soon, so everything's going well, is there, so, thank you.
All right, great, all right, we'll go to Mr. Beerbaum.
I just want to give some commentary, I've seen some stuff about, online at least, about the city's in dire straits and the city can't afford this and the city can't afford that. And I might get in trouble for saying this publicly, but to me, it's no different what we're going through, right, having discussions at a council level about what our priorities are and what we want to fund. It's no different than having the discussion that I have to have sometimes with my wife, and I say, we're not broke, but we're not shopping at Amazon today, you know? So the city's not any kind of. The boxes still arrive. But we're not in any sort of, you know, dire straits. This, a lot of this discussion, although, you know, to the general public might look like, you know, calamity and that we can't afford what we have and all that, it's, it's not that at all. It's about priorities and saying, are we going to fund this or are we going to fund that? What do we want to do now? What do we want to do, three, five, ten, et cetera? The city's not in any kind of dire straits, I just want to reiterate that. The city's good, money's there, we're okay, but it's about priorities.
Thank you for short, shortening your vacation to be with us.
I, I would, I would add on to that, and it's maximizing impact, so it's like, how can we do? Everybody's doing more with less and, and it is, it gets tight, but I, I do appreciate it, Mr. Mayor. It was a quick trip in here, it was a quick trip back from Nashville too. But one thing that I did hear tonight that I would like to clarify on, and I think it was Ms. Sharon, who was talking about the bathrooms at the lake yard. We've been, the, our visitor center's getting remodeled around the lake. And then the TDC and the BCC have been gracious and, and helping with funding that project as well too. So those bathrooms, they're coming, and there, there's some good things coming to this city. So it, it's just, how can we, how can we fund multiple systems just like that? How, how can we all help each other out? How we fund multiple systems to keep everything flowing efficiently? But it, it was a good trip, thank you. Amy?
Kobe, it looks like a year ago and the last day or two, you became a daddy. So how was the first birthday party?
My wife looked at me on whatever day it was, and she said, it's, it's already been a long week, but it's going to be a lot longer, so just suck it up. That's what I got, half way through the week.
Councilman Beerbaum is, is, is right on the, the, the Latin, we don't need to panic, right, with, with the budget. And, you know, this council, one thing I enjoy working with you, you all, is, is that we're proactive looking down the road. We're trying to address that twenty-two percent transfer reduction, and that's something the state feel like we need to do. I came out and nodd it, right, and we, we need to, we need to start working on that. So we've been proactive with that kind of stuff, and I, and I'm proud of that fact. And, and, you know, nobody wants to hurt our fire department or our employees or anything like that. These are just conversations we have to have and, and, and we're having them, so that's, that's great. Congratulations, Michael Nelson, employee of the month, right? Or employee of the quarter, that is, he works with our I, IT department. Thank you, Michael. Another thing that's come to my attention, on these, on these budget things, I, it's, it's my, my understanding that there, there's a possibility that those properties, what we, we talked about earlier with the Harbison Field Fire Department Community Center property. I, I understand that there is a possibility that the city, the state could turn those properties to the city. And if, if that is the case, that, that makes us available for grant opportunities to do things that we need to do to, to those buildings, to, to the fire department, to the community center repairs. We're looking at this building right here, you know, and, and it needs a lot of repairs that we don't write at this point, know where it's coming from to do it. So here's one building has to be done, those buildings will have to be done. And so we know that we better be looking down the road at these kind of things. So I think that's something that we have to, we have to look at. We, we, we also have to, you know, consider that, you know, there's, we're, we're not at the end of our income from now till twenty thirty-three with the CRA, when they, they, you know, have to have those bonds paid out and all that. And someone made a comment, and I, they don't see our revenue increasing. Our revenue is bound to increase because we're growing.
Yeah.
And we're doing things just like you just presented a while ago with the sewage collection. So our income will, will, we're, we're working hard and, and everybody's thinking and working ways to do this. So I'm proud of that fact, but I, I think if we want to keep our fire department, that's going to have to be decided, you know? I think a lot of people do want to see it, and I know it's expensive. But this is what we have to do. We have to roll our sleeves up and figure out ways to do things to provide services to our, to our city. And so I, I think that's something that we should look into, whether that is a real possibility of acquiring those properties from the state. And I, I know we have the agreement with the maintenance for, with the county on Harbison Field and all that, but those things could be worked out. If, if it allows us to keep our fire department, improve it, give those guys a good place to be, expand that building, get ladder trucks we need, all those sort of things, I think it's worth taking a hard look at, you know?
Dan, you had two or three things.
Yes, sir. I don't know if this, this is a learning thing. So, um, Kobe, I don't, I'm not going to hold you to an exact number, but you know how many contracts we have regarding water and sewage? Are there multiple contracts out there with multiple companies, or is there just one?
Well, do you, what do you, what are you referring, you're referring to projects, you're referring to consultant services?
If we, if this, if the city of the Kenyatta Springs has a contract with any company in connection to our water and sewage, what would that be?
In terms of consulting, Jacobs runs our, and operates our plants and lift stations. Anchor Engineering and Three-Nice Group provide consultant services for water and wastewater operations. And, and in terms of projects, we're currently under contract with a two eighty B project, which is grant funded on the city's half from legislative appropriations. Affluent line, we have a contract for design and CEI that kicks off, I believe, next week. We're out a bit, so. I'm thinking, that's all I can think off the top of my head, I had to pull, see if there's anything else, but I think that's all I can.
That's funny, impressive.
Look at that press, that's all we haven't done yet.
So the fan press, the hopes is open September, that was a bid, that was ITB, council approved it, so it was a purchase of a piece of equipment.
Do you have a ballpark fig- figure on all the companies that we've got contracts with on what that costs the city?
I may have to get it to you, but I mean.
Okay, we can address that another time, but I just got a little spool in there, so I appreciate it. Is this something that we would discuss at the budget meeting?
I guess it depends on the intent of what, what you're asking for.
When we want to find out where our money's going. So we want to know how to budget it.
Yeah. Yeah, so during the budget workshops, we'll, we'll go through every, we'll go through the line items, we're doing staff. And we go through and specifically budget and line items, and then this year, we update CIP as part of the process. We hope to have more detailed sheets in the budget this year. So capital improvement projects that we budget for will have its own sheet explaining more information, where it's coming from, what it's for, how long it intends to take, and then any other detail in there as well. So this year, you'll see R and M sewer, right, R and M water. We'll have a detailed sheet that explains to you of the six hundred thousand our budgeted, what in there are we doing? So we'll break all that down this year.
Can you bring the photos up?
Jesse has them right there.
And you, can you blow each one up, the full screen if possible? Okay, this right here is Randall's crew. This is what they do every day just about. They go all over the city, repairing, repairing these old clay pipes. The one that they're replacing now, they had, they got two spots there, one of the holes is already covered back up. The whole side of the, of the pipe was out. This is some of the city's equipment required to take care of this. That's other equipment down the road toward the old library. There's a lot of equipment involved. Now, this guy right here, he's the foreman. And what can you tell me about him? He, he's a, he's a cracker jack, he is really good, what's his name?
Mike Hargrove.
And he's been with the city how long?
I'd have to look at, I believe it's been over ten years.
Okay, that's a lot of knowledge right there. These guys right here, we're doing backbreaking work for Q A straight. And these, these guys don't, they don't go brick. These guys are serious about working. There's three crews out there, and I'm not partial to Randall, I don't even know his last name. That is by far the hardest working crew I've seen in public works. And I just wanted to give them a shout out. Are there any more pictures or is that it? Okay. So the last thing I want to say is, I keep trying to catch Cody on something to where he'll say, wow, that's a good idea. So, so this is what I ran by. I said, hey, hey, hey Kobe, we got a million dollars from the state of Florida courtesy of Shane Abbott, right? I said, we got another million dollars for the affluent line from Congressman Dunn, right? And he said, yeah. And I said, well, could we take that two million dollars and get one of these fifty fifty grants and, and turn that into four million dollars? And he said, I'm already on it. So I did, I hadn't got it yet, but I'm still trying. So that's, that's how, and nobody's asking to do this, he just did it. You know, he, he took two million dollars and he's turning it into four. Now, this is the part, one of the parts I have hard, a hard time having patience with. How soon can we take this four million dollars and start putting it into that affluent line?
So the one million, so, back up a second. We have the three hundred thousand dollar grant from Ways, from Northwest Florida Water Management District for design. We'll fund the other one hundred eighty-three thousand of that cost. Then the million dollars that Representative Abbott secured for the city will go toward construction for, and we'll get that in within the next probably eight to nine, ten months in terms of an agreement and the funds, eight to ten months. In terms of getting the money from the state, well, we will not collect money from the state, it's a reimbursable grant, as are all of our grants. The other million from Congressman Dunn's office, through Congress, we're waiting for the bill, budget to be passed, so we're still waiting for that, as few hurdles to go through. But in essence, that two million dollars, we'll use that money to leverage hopefully SRF, which is State Revolving Fund with the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. They have two funding cycles in the fall, one in the fall, one in the spring, so Three-Nice Group, who's doing our design work. As they're doing design, they'll also be coordinating with SRF for funding opportunities. And hopefully, we will get an eighty twenty grant, the last few we've received from DEP has been fifty fifty. But hopefully, we can get an eighty twenty, which would reduce our burden.
And who would work on that, would, would Tim Larson work on that, or would our in-house grant or work on that?
So SRF typically, when we go through an SRF program, the engineering firm on board would be the consultant for the city to provide that application and to do that. But Denise, our grants coordinator, she would also be involved in that as well for compliance. So would the utilities director Randall, he'd be overseeing the project, and then Denise would submit reimbursements on the city's behalf.
Okay. And the last question is, what was this stormwater workshop here today when we walked in?
It's a part of the city's vulnerability assessment, so in two thousand, so, and this year, we got the grant last year, but we budgeted for it this year, it was a hundred percent grant from DEP for vulnerability assessment. So they've been through a couple of public meetings. When they're completed, they'll bring back an assessment to the city for flood risk mitigation and stuff like that. We'll take that planning document and go for funding.
Are they going to give the, um, the council a demonstration?
Yes, once they're come, done with all the information and get ready to finalize it to the state, the council will get an opportunity to review and I would assume adopt.
That's it, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, well, we'll call this meeting adjourned.